All right, everybody. Calling to order, the Tuesday, February 19th, 2019, Planning Commission meeting. Hello. Would you like to take the roll?
Yes, commissioners, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I'll use my outdoor voice. Mr. Wadisco.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Ms. Teetz.
Here.
Mr. Krasner.
Here.
Ms. Hockenberry.
Here.
Mr. Puentez.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
And I would just like to say thank you, everyone, for accommodating us on the delayed start while we got the new room set up. We are in temporary quarters tonight. Our usual temporary quarters are occupied by the school board, which makes sense. It's their room. And they've been gracious enough to allow us to use the Mary Ellen Henderson Cafeterium, which is certainly spacious enough for us, but figuring out where to put the tables took us a little bit of time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody, for making this happen this evening. Can I get a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
So move.
A second?
Second.
I'm not sure who got there first, but are we giving it to Tim? Tim got there first.
Gotcha.
All right. We have a very full agenda this evening. The actual agenda is not overly long, but lots of work session items. So as we go through this, I would just request that everybody ask the questions they need to ask and keep the dialogue as focused as we can. Otherwise, we'll be here quite late. So in that vein, let's begin immediately with -- oh, actually, I'm sorry. We need to ask if there are any petitions for items not on the agenda before we move into the CIP. Did you receive any?
We have not received any. For anyone who's interested, there are speaker slips as well as a printed copy of all the materials on the paper there behind the table there behind the podium.
And if you want to speak on something that is on the agenda, there will be opportunity to do that. All right, well, seeing that you have none, let's move then right into the capital improvements program. This is action item 6A.
Thank you, Chair and Planning Commission members. Pleased to be back for the final public hearing for the CIP and your action. I just want to orient you to the materials that you received today when we updated the posting to Granus and provided you a hard copy this evening simply because of the immediacy of the timing to your meeting. The staff report that has a revised 215, 2019 date at the top with gray highlights would be the latest staff report, and that came with what's called Attachment 4 on the posting to Granicus. It has a revised date for page 3-2, 6-2, and 6-2A, which I'll highlight briefly for you. The reason for the change is actually some positive news. The Finance Office had revised revenue projections from the time in which I finalized the staff report for tonight's meeting and this distribution with the revised that allowed for an increase of revenue. And under the virtual revenue sharing program with the schools, revenues are being split 50-50 after taking out for debt service and grants. So of this new revenue, additional funds were made available to the schools, and that's being allocated to the school's facility reinvestment project. So looking at page 3-2, under public facilities, what was, when you saw it on February 4th, all green for unfunded, you'll now see $125,000 in FY '20, about eight lines down under school facilities reinvestment, yellow. So now that it's showing yellow, it means there's PEGO allocated to that. And because it would be a commitment to being built into the tax base, we were able to carry that through to the out years. For all years except for 2021, the school board's request is fully funded. We will work with school staff for the next CIP because if they don't spend everything in 2020 and carry over, they may be able to pay some of their projects to make it funded because the out years, they hadn't fully allocated that money to projects because they didn't think it would be funded. So that's good news, and that's the reason for the change before you. That's more fully described in the staff report, once again highlighted in gray. That did change the project sheet, so I did give you 6-2 revised for your notebooks because there needed to be a PEGO line added. And the school board had originally adopted their CIP in December, and this facility reinvestment project was a new construct that we worked with the school staff on, as I mentioned, on the 4th in order to make it eligible for their projects because a lot of their items were not debt-financed eligible. So the school board readopted on February 12th their CIP that reflected that change so that what's before you this evening, as recommended by city staff, is now consistent with the school board's ask, and we don't have a discrepancy. So with that, those are the points I wanted to highlight and bring to your attention. We did not receive any comments from commissioners in between your meetings. I noted that in the staff report. The proposed motion before you remains as the draft one that you saw on February 4th. And in talking with Mr. Stoddard and the comments from the last commission meeting about what can we change, and there's hardly much to change now, one because of money, but one thought I would recommend to you, and if you were open to it, what we could do next fall is when I was starting the work of the CIP with the staff, I could come to the Planning Commission and see if there's any specific focuses or areas that you would like us to address so that is incorporated in the CIP that I bring to you. I think right now we've worked on a lot of projects, and it's aligned with the area plans with limited money. But going forward, I wanted to propose maybe an earlier touch point with you all before I present the CIP.
Look, I think being proactive, anytime we can be proactive, that's better. I mean, I don't know what will demonstrably change between now and the fall based on all the projects we're funding currently, but as just sort of a matter of course, I think that's a generally good idea, check in with us in the fall prior to you starting to put the whole plan together. So that's a good suggestion. I think that's, again, good policy, good planning. We're planners, right?
Yes. I will make a note to keep that in mind for the fall. And with that, my staff recommendation with concurrence reviewing it with the planning director would be the proposed motion before you.
Okay. Can you just -- I'm trying to follow this 6.2, page 6.2. The numbers are all, you know, fairly round numbers, but there's all these other projects -- in the project description, there's all these different amounts. I'm assuming those are just all folded into these various years and that there's no way to break out. You've done the breakout and rolled it up into a nice, neat number. I just, I'm just not following how I can -- I'm glad that stopped. How I can follow these numbers into the chart, that's all.
Sure. When the school staff gave me their 10 projects, they didn't totally have them broken out by fiscal years. I know which ones they wanted in the near term, like Jesse Thackeray, so I've added in FY '20 and '21 so you can kind of see which projects. But basically, Jesse Thackeray is the FY '20, and then '21, they're looking at the Mary Ellen Henderson ones. And then after that, they'd be in the out years with funding coming. So when they presented it, it didn't come in the order that totally rolled up to the numbers.
Okay. So this MEH security vestibule, that's separate and different from the new construction? I don't --
Correct. So with the new construction, it will connect into the cafeteria and the kitchen, but what they want to do is rebuild the front and actually make the security outside of the interior doors so you'd have a secure entrance to the high school and a secure entrance to Mary Ellen Henderson. Right now, you, in between the two doors is technically the security, but all the security staff and personnel are inside the building. So they want to do a proper security vestibule, and it's not within the high school cost estimate in.
Okay. All right.
And then they have some needs for replacing of flooring throughout this building and some roof stuff.
Yes, as a parent who has a child here, I know that's needed.
So item 1 and item 4 of the school's description would add up to the $125 in FY '20. And then the Mary Ellen Henderson 350 is basically what FY '21 is, except they didn't need all of the $200,000 in FY '20, so I rolled it over to '21. So some of the cash flow doesn't align one for one with their projects.
Okay. That's more clear now. Anybody have any questions? Mrs. Mester? Lindy? I think it comes out.
Anyway, I'm just really glad that that $350,000 -- Is it on? That $350,000 is included because I was quite concerned about that. I remember asking the superintendent because that is not secure out there with the kids coming in, going upstairs, and everybody waiting. So I'm very glad. I don't know what it's planned to really do, but because I was, did not think that's -- we've only got the two doors, but that's not really secure out there.
Just one clarification. You will note that in 2021, there's $275,000 funded and $175,000 unfunded. So we haven't totally reached the 350 yet, but these are very preliminary. They haven't gotten full cost estimates, and they anticipate they won't need all of $125 and '20 and can roll some of it over. So there's more work to do, but we're certainly much closer to funding it than when you saw it on February 4th. I just didn't want to be misleading.
Anything else? All right, well, I said this on the 4th, and I'll say it again. While we're moving through this CIP quicker than in other years, for sure, I think it's just a recognition that we have done enormous capital improvement projects over the last year or two, and that we have a lot of money appropriated for others in terms of like the library and things like that. So our ability to move money around is pretty limited, so our changes to your plan have been virtually none, and none that I'm aware of or yet to hear a motion on. And I think just this reflects the work that has happened in past years, not our negligence on future projects. So I'll speak for myself. I'm happy with the CIP despite the fact that our ability to move money around and make some of the changes is limited. I think that overall, as a community, we have been funding the right projects and have debated those at great length, so this is just representing the state of things as they are. So I'm pleased with what's in front of it. I'm prepared to support the motion that's in front of us in the staff report, and I think it's a good plan for the community going forward, given what we've already discussed and debated. So I want it just to be noted that we are not just accepting this with a rubber stamp, even though we're moving through this quickly. So if there are no other comments, or no one wants to say anything, then I will entertain a motion for the FY 2020 through 2025 six-year capital improvements program. Not all at once. Would anyone like to make a motion?
No one else wants to step up? All right, I guess I'll --
You need the microphone.
In stereo.
Okay, no, I mean, I'm happy to make the motion. I think what the chairman has discussed, I think accurately describes the unique nature of this particular year, and I think that we gave it a thorough vetting under the circumstances. Therefore, I'll move that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve pursuant to Section 6.19 of the City Charter and Section 17.08 of the City Code. The fiscal year 2020 to 2025 capital improvement program is presented on February 4th and 19th, 2019, and summarized on CIP notebook pages 3-1 through 3-7 inclusive, based on the following justifications. The CIP is consistent with the adoptive comprehensive plan, the small area and master plans. The CIP approaches the citywide capital infrastructure and reinvestment needs in a holistic manner. The CIP is enhanced through purposely planned and balanced reinvestment needs, funding options and staff resources. The CIP is fiscally responsive and compliant with adopted financial policies in context of pending amendment for large debt issuance. The CIP must address long-term dedicated and sustainable funding for pay-as-you-go, local funding for facility reinvestment, and other capital needs to provide for fiscal balance of cash and debt financing, and the CIP provides sufficient match funding to leverage grants to address significant transportation needs. That's my motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments on the motion? If not, Jeff, can you take a roll call vote here?
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Puentez?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Wadisco?
Yes. Great. That was easy.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Mester. Appreciate all your hard work, as always. All right. Let's move to item 7A, Planning Commissioner Reports. Does anybody have any reports to give us? Really?
It's getting slow.
Okay. Excellent. Mr. Stoddard, you're up.
Thank you, commissioners. So in your packet tonight is the planning director's report, just a couple items that I want to highlight for the group. First is the launch of the Transportation Options webpage. The link is provided in the report as well as a screen capture of part of the page. The page is intended to provide information for folks who live here, visit here, work here, anyone who's interested in exploring the city of Falls Church. The webpage provides information on bus routes that run throughout the city, including service provided by Womata, ART, the Arlington system, as well as Fairfax Connector, which, of course, is from Fairfax County. Also included on the page is information about the city's expected bike share rollout, which is still planned for early spring, probably May. Also provided is information about ride-sharing services. This work was a product of two folks on city staff, Cameron Garris and Cary Odenino were the driving forces behind it, but of course, there was help along the way from Office of Communications and others. And I do want to make a friendly plug for the Department of Rail and Public Transportation, DRPT, which is the state organization that made available grant funding to make this happen. Also in your packet is the regularly-produced Business and Real Estate News Bulletin, which comes out from the Economic Development Office, which includes information on restaurants and stores that are opening, as well as ones that are closing and those that are opening soon. So that's there for your information. And then the last item is personnel updates. One listed here, Carla Johnson, has started within the department, the Community Planning and Economic Development Services Department, as the department's senior administrative assistant. This is a position that's been open for about a year, and so obviously, people have been pitching in and trying to cover. So getting Carla in the office, she's excited to be here. She's got experience from a lot of other places, and she's already hit the ground running, so that's a much welcome addition. Not listed in the report is also a new start today. Cameron Garris, who I mentioned earlier, his work on the Transportation Options webpage. He had been working as a part-time employee. I'm happy to say that today was his first month in a term appointment with the city to help the city out with some urban design needs. Folks may not be familiar that Cameron was on city staff when the West Falls Church development concepts were first getting underway, and he was responsible for illustrating that four-block development concept with the Central Public Avenue. That was meaningful for the RFP process. It was meaning for the NVTA 15 and 1/2, $15.7 million grant. So getting his urban design skills in-house, I think he's probably going to play a big role in the development of the Small Area Plan for the West End, as well as other urban design needs that we have on city staff. And that is my report.
All right. Exciting times.
Very exciting.
Thank you for the report and for the transportation page, and congratulations to the new staff.
Thank you.
Actually, I had, I did have one commissioner report that I was remiss in not mentioning. Last week, on Monday, I presented the annual report to the city council. They were very receptive to what we had to say. Not as much about our trying to get the Paper Streets and Greenway Downs on their agenda, but otherwise overwhelmingly complimentary of the group. So that's really what I wanted to pass on. They were really pleased with the work that we had done, and if you have a moment, you can watch their comments or my report, and then their comments. And again, they thanked each and every one of you, and we're very pleased with the work that we're doing, so I just want to pass on that sentiment. All right. We can move on to correspondence. It was pretty limited, just a couple of items. We got two, one about safety at Founder's Row, and then another invite for the groundbreaking. I'm somewhat interested in going to that, but it looks like it's on March 4th at between 4:00 and 5:30 PM. So mark it on your calendars, and we have to RSVP, it looks like.
Yes, and there is a link provided at the bottom of the invitation.
Okay. Great. All right. That concludes the meat of the public portion of the meeting. We're going to continue into work session and go into the first item, which is 8A, the Byer Volvo Site Plan.
I'm going to turn this over to Akita Ruzy, who's the lead staff member on the project. She'll provide a brief staff report, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant for a presentation.
Good evening. It's Akita Ruzy with Planning.
It works for me. The camera's there. I don't know if that works for the camera person.
Are you okay? So while they're setting up, I'll start with highlighting the staff report, and then I'll turn it over to the applicant for their presentation. The application before you is as far as site plan to construct a new two-story showroom at 1119 and 1121 West Broad Street. In July 2018, last year, the applicant obtained approval for several variances and a special use permit. Those include a special use permit to allow a motor vehicle sales use as a conditional use in the M1 zone, a variance to allow a motor vehicle sales facility to be located within 208 feet instead of 300 feet of a residential district, and a second variance to allow a front yard setback of 20 feet instead of 25 feet in the M1 district. The current proposal also includes a subdivision to consolidate the existing two lots to build the showroom. The applicant is also requesting a waiver to provide one loading space on-site instead of the three required, and a second waiver for a parking lot perimeter landscaping less than the required 10 feet. Staff has reviewed the site plan and issued comments to the applicant on January 31st. Those comments are in Attachment 3 of your staff report. The applicant is currently working on addressing those comments and intends to submit a revised site plan. The site plan is scheduled for Planning Commission final action on April 15th, and the intent of tonight's discussion is to inform the Planning Commission of their recent submission and get your feedback on their site plan, particularly the architectural material selection proposed. Staff is of the opinion that the project design could benefit from a reduction in the amount of CMU proposed along the east elevation. Staff recommends reducing the amount of CMU by extending the metal panel and glazing treatment towards the middle of the east elevation, or just exploring masonry as a more high-quality finish for that elevation. Additionally, the Architectural Advisory Board also reviewed the project on February 6th and recommending, they recommended adding additional transparent glazing and glass in the front of the dealership area, which is a comment that staff strongly supports. With that, that concludes my staff report. I'll turn it over to the applicant, and I'm happy to take questions after the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Yeah.
Go over the architectural first and the site first. We have a couple of items. We've made some revisions to the site plan and also to the elevations.
Let's start with the site. I think that's the right way to go.
Site, okay. Is it okay if I take this and go up and point?
Absolutely.
Does that work? I think that might be -- Can you hear me?
I think we're going to have a hard time capturing it on film, but it'll help us.
So we were, we came to you last July. We were going through the BZA process to get the variances, and I just wanted to come back and summarize some changes we've made. There haven't been many. There's been a couple changes that I've made since we submitted, which is the package that you received, and it's really just parking lot layout. So just to kind of remind everybody, we're here on Broad Street today where there are two existing buildings. You can see the two buildings here, and then the parking surrounds the site, and we're going to keep that, you know, general site design layout with the new developments. So as you can see here, here we have our new building, and then we have the existing entrance we're keeping on the north side, and then get on the south side. So one thing we are doing is we are, along the streetscape here, we are pulling the building back, and we're having the full 20-foot setback from the curb line here, and we're extending the brick sidewalks. You have the full streetscape along the property frontage. There is, there is a planter and a street tree that are to remain here undisturbed. We are going to have this two-way entrance along the side here. So from circulation standpoint, you could come in through here, you can circulate through the site and exit through here. This is a one-way exit out of the site. You could also enter, park, exit out through here. The thought of this is for service, you could come in and you would pull into this garage here. It's a vehicle drop-off area, where one of the employees would come take your car to then go get serviced, and when you exit, you would exit out through those garage doors on both sides. You'd come out, exit out, and exit out here. The biggest change since, we made a couple changes since what we submitted, is we kind of reworked the parking lot a little bit. We're able to get some more landscape islands. I got some more canopy trees. The biggest thing we've been dealing with is, so we have some solar panels that cover some of these parking spaces, so we're just trying to figure out where to put those so we can still put in canopy trees and try to space everything out adequately, which I think we've done a better job here by separating the canopy trees and the islands. We also do have four vehicle charging stations within the parking lot in the rear there. We have, I think we have 24 parking spaces, and about 21 or 22 are required. We also do meet the bike parking, so we have four public spaces up here along the streetscape, and then we have the, sorry, I said four. There's three racks, which is six spaces. And then we have two more racks in here, which are actually under the canopy, under the solar panel, so that's kind of how they're covered and protected from weather under there. The main entrance, obviously, is right here. There's a canopy over that, and that's kind of the main site layout. So you'll still see, we do have, there are some buffers for landscaping we're requesting. There's a little skinnier area along here where we don't quite have the 10 feet. We are planting the canopy trees where we can. There also are some overhead lines. There's a storm sewer that runs through and an easement, so that does limit some of the canopy trees we can plant in the back here. But this is the proposed landscaping we're showing with this. So that's a quick overview of the site design. One more thing I guess I'll mention is for stormwater management, we are actually reducing the amount of impervious area because there's really not much or any landscaping out there today. So by adding these landscape islands and these buffers, we actually are able to reduce the runoff, and we are capturing it on-site. There's some existing inlets. We're adding some proposed inlets along the curbs, and the roof water will be taken underground and connected right underground into the system.
Okay. Before we go to the architecture, let me ask if everybody has any questions about this? Mr. Stevens?
I don't have a question but a comment.
Yeah, sure.
First of all, I'm really glad to hear that you're putting in the solar canopy. I think, as I recall from the Architectural Advisory Board meeting, it's a 14-kilowatt system. I think that's something that should be highlighted when the project is done. Right. And I would encourage the city to be mindful of that in terms of the placement of the trees. It doesn't do any good to put the solar panels on top of the canopy and then have shade trees diminish their effectiveness. So I would strongly encourage the city to take that into account. I think there was a comment on the staff letter, number 28, that gave me a little pause. If we need to consider a variance of some kind, I'd certainly be very open to that. So that's it. Thanks.
Yep.
I have two questions. I mean, the first one on stormwater, yes, obviously, you're dealing with a site that's a site that's completely, pretty much completely impervious today, and so you're improving it slightly, which is good. I think when you were in for the variance, when we talked about that, I think I asked about the potential for onsite, either onsite detention or onsite BMPs, even though technically, you know, you're not required to do any of that. I don't see any of that in this site plan. I wonder if you could comment on that, if that's still something that you would consider, again, in the spirit of, it's an area of the city that's, if you look at the aerial -- of, it's an area of the city that's, if you look at the aerial photograph, it's like a huge area of impervious. It's probably the largest concentration of impervious covered. It all flows into the trip's run, and it all predates modern stormwater controls. And so it's a huge, you know, generator of both flooding and pollution in that watershed. And anytime I see, I think I see a redevelopment in this part of town, I think it's like an opportunity to try to make amends, so to speak, for the sins of the past when we didn't know better. And so I wonder if you could comment on that.
Well, we're not showing anything additional now. And the one thing I'd like to explain a little more is, you know, as I said, we're reducing impervious area. So, but I want to make it clear that we're not meeting it just because we're reducing impervious area a little bit. There's an energy balance equation that we have to do. So there's equations that look at the volume of water, and you have to reduce it to a certain amount. So we are reducing it a fair amount. So we meet the equation, basically, by the work that we're doing.
Right.
I think it's something we can talk about, but at this point, we really only planned on meeting the requirements through the energy balance equation.
Sure. Even in those islands, I mean, you know, maybe there's something that can be done in those islands to, you know, for some onsite BMP. I mean, I know it's not a huge site.
Right.
I understand there are constraints in that area, but I think it's worth considering. So I'll just put that out there again as something for the team to think about.
We can talk about it.
Another question I had was on lighting. I think you have a photometric plan in there. I just want to make sure. And I don't know if city staff, I'm sure they looked at it. I mean, is it meeting, I mean, with, anytime we're dealing with car dealers, I know it's always a constant push and pull between security and light pollution. I don't know, maybe it's more a question for staff. I mean, I just don't, I haven't read our ordinance recently in regards to lighting. Is it meeting that? Have you looked at the, have you reviewed the photometric?
We can take a look at it. Our Public Works Department is the one that reviews photometric sheets to make sure it complies with the code, but we can, we can double check on that for the next meeting.
Right. And I don't know if these are the kind, I mean, I know car dealers typically want to have the lights on all night long. And so.
I can actually do a sec because Meta Engineers did our photometric plan, and that has already come up with Doug Frazier. And we're using a lower light pole than the city is required. We're only at a 27-foot height. And we have the lights that are specified by Volvo. It's a very, basically, it's a, as I, I think I explained this last time, it's a light fixture that's, that's a Volvo-approved lights fixture that's used throughout the country. In some areas where we have dark sky requirements or you have bird migration requirements. So the light fixture meets all of that. You're not required to have that here. So it's already a much higher standard than what the city would require. So we're well under what's required. And our photometric plan is actually, you know, fairly low light level. And the reason being with the solar canopies, there will be lighting underneath the solar canopies. The solar canopies are only 12-foot off-high. So the lighting levels are going to be much reduced for the site in general because they're going to be more localized at the solar panel.
Okay.
So we're well below, and I actually, last time you asked me about it, so I actually have a cut sheet if you're interested on that fixture. It's a, you know, it's a very high-efficient LED light fixture that basically has, you know, a very stark cutoff.
Okay. And the temperature of that fixture is not too?
It's 3,000.
Bright?
Well, there, you know, the temperatures go anywhere from 2,500 to 4,000. You know, standard car dealers would love to have 2,500.
Right, exactly.
You know, because it's brighter. But the way it works with Volvo is that the, to enhance the colors of the cars and the paints that they use, 3,200 is their standard, which is not a maximum. It's, you know, it's not, it's not your incandescent light bulb.
No, I know that.
But it's not a pure, pure white light. It's a 3,200, which would be very comfortable light fixture.
Well, and again, and if the fixtures are low enough. And I did quickly, there was a photometric in there. I looked at it at the edges. It seemed like it was, it was okay.
Yeah, we have a very stark cutoff right at the edges. So it's, you know, and that's part of the, you know, the reason for doing the lower light poles is we have a few more poles, but we have an offset with lighting under the canopies. And I think you're going to, you know, once it's done, I think you'll probably find it'll probably be the best-lit dealership around in terms of what the community wants to see and balances what the, you know, what the manufacturer likes to see.
Okay. I appreciate that. And if staff can just confirm that it's meeting whatever we're saying.
Again, that was handled with the Building Department. I don't think it's, you know, it's not done at the planning level, but, you know, it was done in our building permit submission.
Just the last, last question. This is back on circulation. And this will be my last question on this. I know, and I know, I brought this up, and I know the BZA looks like adopted a condition, again, requiring any onsite vehicle delivery, or vehicle delivery to be onsite. And so it's not shown on the site plan where that is going to occur. I mean, is the plan to have the car carriers come onto this site and circulate this site? Or what's the plan for vehicle delivery here? Where they would be, where's that going to happen? Because I know right now, Don Byer kind of does it. I've seen it. And sometimes I know you can't control the drivers. They've been known to stop in the middle of Broad Street, or sometimes they are on Gordon.
On Ford Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Not as long as it's acceptable. Otherwise, it'll be in perfect condition.
Well, if you're far enough off the edge. All right. So you drive the cars over to this site, kind of individually? Okay.
That's not conducive for a truck to drop cars off at.
No, I didn't think so. And I just wanted to make sure they weren't going to pull in, pull in the opposing left turn lane, which occasionally, again, I don't think the dealer is encouraging them to do that. But I've seen drivers on occasion, maybe they're lost, they don't know the area, they don't know where else to go. So just to make sure that they're not, at least they're not stopping on Broad Street because that causes a headache.
Mr. Krasner, if I can also add to that, the special use permit also has a condition in the zoning code that they cannot unload and load vehicles on a public street without a council action. So they're aware of that. And we've had them put that condition on the site plan, just so that everyone's aware of that and enforcement can be done.
Okay. Good. That's my last question. Thanks.
Yeah. Lyndy?
Anyway, thank you. I imagine you're going to have charging stations?
Yes, we are.
Did you put those on? Since that is the future of the world. And then, so that's all in the plan. Okay. And then it's still left-hand in, right-hand out, as far as the circulation goes? Or it could be right-hand in or left-hand in? But then just right-hand out, or?
We're not limiting any of the exist, we're not limiting any of the circulation.
Okay.
So I think you could turn, you could, so the main entrance, we'll call it the northern entrance.
Okay.
You could turn right in, right out.
Okay.
I think there is full movement. I don't know if that would realistically happen, but we're not limiting anything.
Because that's crazy up there as it is.
Right.
You know, with the, and I don't think there's a turning lane there. The turning lane is up further.
No, correct.
Any other comments, questions on the site part? I just have one or two real quick ones. I'm concerned also about the circulation, not about the car, you know, loading. But the service area, about how many car lengths are we talking between that service dock and the back to West Broad? And where's the, you know, the queue? It doesn't look like a big bay from here. I'm concerned that the cars could back up. It would restrict flow of traffic. I'm sure you guys have considered this and are longtime residents of Route 7, so you know the difficulties there. But how is that supposed to function on the, I guess we're calling that the west side of the project?
So you're talking about the exit area?
More the entrance.
Entrance. So there's a, so once you pass the public sidewalk, you have 120 feet until you hit the turn into the garage. So that's about six car lengths, you could say? That could theoretically line up on private, on property. And then you could have a seventh waiting to get in the garage. And then you have?
Two cars.
Two in the garage. So.
And it's a double lane, so it's actually four.
Mm-hmm.
It's a double lane in the garage.
So the service drop-off area is two lanes. So you could have four cars undercover, and you can have six in queue. And the service building, as you know, is a straight shot. It's adjacent to it. The idea would be that a porter would just take the car right into the service. We're not planning to stack cars on this site because they would go right into service.
Okay. And in terms of servicing, or checking in in the morning, 10 cars, is this the normal pattern? I mean, is this?
We also don't take them all at once anymore. Everything's by appointment. So it's all staggered anyways. We do that now. So we never have more than probably 10 cars at one time anyways.
Okay. And there's room for people to get to the parking lot when you have a queue of cars?
Yes.
There's not, there's not a problem there? And the staff report talked about the waiver for the loading zone. Where is that exactly?
Well, yeah. So there's one loading space, which is.
Waiver, it said waiver for loading space reduction. That's, that's what I wanted.
Right. So there's one loading space, which is like the, the.
Band size.
That's, it's, well, it's the standard size. It's kind of thought of for the office portion of the project. So it's the southwestern corner, kind of right where the largest triangular piece is on the upper left. That's where there's one loading space there.
As opposed to two?
As opposed to three.
Three.
So the two loading spaces that we're requesting to have waived are for the car, like that are associated with the dealership part or the showroom. So those are the ones where the cars are. We talked about loading offsite at a different location. So that's why they're not being provided here. So those are the two loading spaces we're requesting get waived from being onsite.
So what, what is requiring the three? The code is saying for?
Code is saying three. So there's one that's required for the office use?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's just specifically for car dealerships? That's what this code is? Or this is a?
Indoor dealership requires two spaces. Yeah.
But specific to car dealership?
Yeah.
Okay. And you're saying you don't need it because you're going to load offsite?
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, that, those were my questions about the site. So if we want to move then to the architectural and materials section?
Okay. The architectural materials, at our, you know, last hearing, you asked about reducing, and this, I think we went over on the fourth, that we did reduce the masonry facade so that when you're on Broad Street, if you look down the drive aisle here, going back a third, you have glass or ACM panels. ACM is the aluminum panels. And so we have 20, let's see, one, two, three, four. We have 25 feet of glass, and we have 25 feet of ACM. So we have 50 feet of masonry being covered by, you know, I would consider an upgraded materials, which is the glass. And I brought you samples. I didn't think we were going to go over material, the materials again. But last time, I think I showed you the, you know, the blue glass and the frit glass, which was the frosted glass. So where we have, where we have the Volvo sign, this is a blue, the blue glass, because the Volvo is a white signage, just part of that. And then at the corner, we have the white frosted glass. And then from, from this portion forward, which is 25 feet, it'll be an aluminum panel, which matches the aluminum panels that we have on the other portion of the, of the building. So the building in here, this is all, from this corner here, coming around, around, and around to here, which is what is customer-facing. It's all either glass or aluminum panels. This right here is not customer-facing because this would be our fire egress, and the service building comes out to here. So this is really a service drive. No customers would, you know, they wouldn't drive in this way. And typically, they wouldn't drive out that way either. There would be no reason to, you know, it's not visible. So we feel that, you know, it's the right proportion of, you know, of concrete masonry units to, you know, to the ACM and to the glass panels.
And that's where staff was hoping it'd be?
Yeah, they asked me. Initially, we had, we had concrete all the way to the corner. We just had a four-foot section of glass to wrap. And then when I got those comments back, I went back to Volvo and asked, if we do this, can we extend the glass? And they said, well, if you do that, then we're going to require you to use our Volvo standard, which would be the blue glass, because that gives you another elevation for signage. So once we did, once we did that, you know, glass is much more expensive than ACM panels. So we were allowed to basically extend the aluminum panels to finish out that wall. So basically, when you're on, if you're, if you're doing a drive-by, I mean, you'd definitely.
You'd have trouble seeing anything.
Yeah, you won't see anything. You'll have to pull in to see it because you drive by, you're either going to see the glazing, or you're going to see the aluminum panels if you look down deep enough. Yeah, because there's, the service building is adjacent to it. It really cuts off your view. Right.
So this seems, this is a question for staff. That seemed like a reasonable explanation to me. Was this comment, or these comments prior to this change? Because this seems like a significant change. Or is staff still concerned, or the Architectural Advisory Board still concerned about this elevation, or this side, this east side?
Staff hasn't seen the revised submission and.
I see.
According to the applicant, he's saying that they've extended that, the metal and the glazing treatment further down. We'll just have to compare notes with what we had initially.
Sure.
Try to see if that's an improvement or not.
So it sounds like, what I'm hearing is instead of four feet, it went from four feet to 50 feet of.
That's correct.
Of adjustment. So again, that seemed like a reasonable explanation to me. So if staff could check and see if that meets what your feedback.
I have now resubmitted to Doug Frazier, because we submitted in early January the original building permits for a building review. I wanted to make sure that we, we touched on all your comments before I went, I went back in. He's aware of it, that it's coming in. But he said, wait till you have your, don't send me something till you know it's done.
Yeah. Well, that's the point of the work session.
I only want to review it once.
Exactly.
He only wants to do the review once.
So I said, I think that's reasonable. Let me hear from everybody else if they think this needs a.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah. So what we would like to do is with the site plan submission, it's this Friday. I'll submit those on Friday, and then you'll have the full package then.
Any other questions on the materials or architecture? Mr. Krasner?
I had the occasion to be out at Don Byer's Dallas.
Oh, good.
It looks like it was finishing construction. So.
This is.
Last time to see the glass. Yes, this is the exact same materials that that store has. I mean, they were actually still putting on the sign on the side of the building. They were like just finishing it up. So, yeah, it was pretty attractive. I mean, I think that the materials are.
Wait till you see the canopy. It's not gone in yet. Once the front canopy goes in, that'll even, you know, be a lot nicer. Because that was one of the things you asked about, division glass, but we don't, we haven't had that installed.
No, I think overall, they're nice materials. I mean, I think actually, for that block, I think it'll be the, sort of, it'll be the most, the, right, the sharpest thing on that section of Broad Street, I have to say. I mean, not that the competition is that steep around there, but it's, but yeah, it'll be quite striking. Because it's, the one out in Dulles was actually, I mean, that's a bigger building, a much larger building, it seemed like. But it was pretty impressive, so.
This is actually going to be, since it's closer to the street, you're going to get more impact. Because the Dulles building is set pretty far back.
Right. It's in like a, or a park. But yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But anyhow.
And if I recall, the cars are on both stories? Is that?
No, it's just, it's a two-story space, but the cars are only at the first level.
Only first.
So we have a double-height space. And the cars will be at the pedestrian level. So as you walk by the sidewalk, you have these nice picture windows. You'll see the vehicles in there. As I mentioned last time, dealerships, the footprints are getting smaller. They don't keep as many cars onsite. The idea is just to have, you know, really a jewel box of a little building with, you know, with the right product in there. You know, where less is more. That's kind of the thought.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, we have Mike Byer here today, so he might want to say a couple things. I don't know. If he doesn't.
And it's nicer inside than outside. So once we get closer to the, seeing the materials, it is really spectacular. And a dramatic improvement, what we have now, which has been there pretty much, if, 50 years now. A long time. So time for change. So we've got some great things planned for that site. So that'll be next.
From the last one.
Yes. So again, thank you for your consideration here. And we're excited to move forward as quickly as possible.
Terrific. Well, I think you've gotten the feedback you need from the Planning Commission, and we're all ready for your resubmission of site plan, I think. I don't know that we have any real guidance other than the questions you answered. So we'll schedule to hear it on April 15th.
Should I ask, talk about getting the site? Akita, so since we're going to come back on the 15th, would it be possible to have everything done? Because since Michael is here, as you said, you're going to, you said you're going to ask to see if we can get everything wrapped up?
That's something we would discuss with our planning director, Paul Stott. Planning Commission's schedule is something we'd sort of discuss offline, if that makes sense.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It's been a, it's been a nice process to work with you all.
Volvo police cars in town? Why don't you stop having those?
It was a big scandal.
I'm sure if the Xing90 police cars looked at your ass.
All right. We are going to move on to the demographics.
Woo, I got a vice for.
Chapter. And we are only three minutes behind schedule, so I'm very excited about that. So, Mr. Stott, are you making the staff report?
Yes, I think a staff introduction, and then we'll turn it over to the consultants.
Okay.
So your second work session item tonight, Chair and members of the Planning Commission, is a review of some demographic proj- is a review of some demographic projections.
Oh, yes.
There is a brief staff report. I'll highlight some key items in that before turning it over to the team of consultants, Lisa Sturdevent and Ryan Price. So the request tonight, as I said, is for a work session item. Staff does have some specific questions that we're requesting the planning commission to weigh in on, and those are, one, are there any remaining questions that the commission has regarding demographic trends? Two, what new questions do you have about the demographic projections that are being presented? And then, three, what connections do you want staff and the consultant team to explore in more depth? And you'll hear those three words throughout the staff report as well as the presentation, that idea of trends, projections, and connections. And that's what demographics is really all about in the concept worth, in the context of the comprehensive plan. To let you know where this has been since you've seen it last, planning commission last saw these materials at a work session on November 5th. That's when the trends report was presented. There's a recap of the trends report in the consultant presentation. Since that date, that same trends report went to the city council on November 13th. And then the consultants took information from both groups and used that to start their work on the projections, which they'll be presenting tonight. As I mentioned, the comprehensive plan, this look at demographics is happening within the context of the city's update of the comprehensive plan, which is an ongoing process. The comprehensive plan, just for reference, is a guide for long-term development of the community. It typically has a 20- to 30-year timeframe or planning horizon. And it looks at future needs. And it looks at future needs in a wide range of areas: housing, economics, public facilities, parks, environment. And within that, demographics is really a fact base for a lot of the other chapters that need to be a part of a comprehensive plan. And it's a fact base in a number of different ways. It's talking about what are the households going to look like in the future? What are the people going to be in the, what skills, what job skills will they have? What income levels will they be at? So those are the questions that demographics explores. As I mentioned, the scope of work for this update has three facets: trends, projections, and connections. We're at stage two, looking at those draft projections for the future. Last section of the staff report talks about timing for the chapter update. Highlighted and bold is the February 19 work session tonight. Recently, we also got on the council schedule for a March 4 work session. We need to confirm that that works for everybody on the team, but that date looks like it's available. We'd also be going out to the school board, the rest of the boards and commissions, and then bringing it back to the planning commission and council for action, hopefully in May or June of this year. With that, I want to turn it over to the consultant team.
Great. You don't have to hold it. Well, I'm going to move it over so we can share. Is it okay? Yeah. Great. Is it okay? Thanks, Paul. Thank you to the members of the planning commission to having us here this evening. My name's Lisa Sturdevent. It's nice to see you again. My colleague, Ryan Price. And we have a few slides to show. I realize we have no mechanism for moving them, so...
I'm your mechanism.
Jeff is our mechanism for moving them, so...
He's expensive.
It's a team effort here. And as Paul mentioned, the last time we were here, we talked about the trends, recent trends. And so Ryan's going to give just a very quick recap of what we talked about last time, just to remind you all. And then I'm going to talk about the draft forecasts and sort of those projections and connections conversation that Paul mentioned. And hopefully, we'll have a good amount of time for a conversation with you all. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan to get us started.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you guys again. Going to briefly go over some of the major themes that were in the demographics change report that we discussed together back in November. And, you know, kind of as we looked at the demographic data of the city and of surrounding communities, just want to highlight some of the things that have changed over the past five years. So there are more single-person households. About one-third of all the households in the city now are people living by themselves, which is up from five years ago. In terms of the households that are families, the trends have been, particularly with the homeowner segment, are having more children. So the three or more children group in particular saw some growth over the past five years, which is driving up the school wage population more broadly. Overall, the city's population is aging, so that's both the 55 and older cohort, as well as the 65 and older cohort, have seen considerable growth over the past five years here in Falls Church. In terms of racial diversity, the city is becoming more diverse, but at a much slower pace than the region as a whole and even, you know, communities directly adjacent to the city. In terms of income, there's been this surge of kind of this middle-income range, which is the $50,000 to $100,000 per year range. And this is likely reflective of the increase in single-person households. In terms of housing trends, most of the growth of housing units here in the city have been multifamily over the past five years, and particularly smaller units. So studios and one-bedrooms have seen an increase in those units. And many of those units are likely attracting a lot of the single-person households that we saw in the previous slide. The data shows, you know, there are a lot, there's a huge portion of single-family detached homes in the city. But over the past five years, actually, the data suggests that there's more multifamily units than single-family detached units, which was not the case five years ago. So as for the workforce, you know, the types of jobs that Falls Church residents have or holding are much different than the types of jobs that workers in Falls Church have. So residents of Falls Church who have a job tend to be in higher-paying sectors, mainly the public administration sector as well as the professional business services sector. And by and large, Falls Church residents who work commute to Fairfax County or DC. Then when we took a look at the workers in Falls Church, those that have a job in Falls Church, those tend to be in lower-paying sectors, mainly the retail trade and hospitality and tourism-related sectors. Those workers mainly commute from Fairfax County as well. But notably, about 12% actually commute from Maryland or places beyond, so outside of Virginia, outside of DC.
Teachers in that place.
I'm sorry?
Teachers should be included in that below.
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, they are. In some, in the education or in the public administration. So in terms of the income levels, you can see here on the right, notable difference between the median of the workers in Falls Church and the median of residents who work, which has implications, you know, for things like housing affordability, you know, if some of those workers wanted to live here in the city. So that's just a quick recap of what we discussed in November. I'd like to turn it over to Lisa to talk about the projections.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. And we'll have a chance to, I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about that in November, so we didn't want to belabor it, but we're happy to talk more about the recent trends. But what we really want to do tonight is share with you the preliminary forecasts of population, households, and jobs in the city. And we just went over in a lot of detail some demographics. And the forecasts that we've done are not demographic forecasts. So we're not projecting average household sizes explicitly. We're not projecting race and ethnicity. We're projecting those, technically, four things: population, households, housing units, and jobs. And we approached this in sort of three different ways to start this conversation about projections, with the idea that having a range of projections, since forecasting, of course, is not an exact science, there's lots of unknowns, having a range of forecasts is actually sometimes more helpful for thinking about the possibilities and actually thinking about what different types of interventions the city might make and how that might play out, given the different forecasts. So we're going to share with you sort of this preliminary work on taking three different approaches. And I will talk in very high level about the approaches and we can go into more depth. But the first is really the method that the city and most of the jurisdictions around the region use as part of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments Cooperative Forecasting. So this is a, what we have called a development-based method, which basically looks at potential development patterns, both residential and commercial, and then converts that, converts space into people, basically. And so we make assumptions about anticipated residential and commercial development. We also make assumptions about a number of other things, including vacancy rates, average household sizes, and space per worker. So we'll spend the most time on that method because that's the method that the city has historically used. And so we've updated that for this round. We wanted to compare with some of the other potential ways to approach the forecast for the city, so we wanted to make sure we shared the Weldon Cooper Center forecast, so the University of Virginia's Weldon Cooper Center, does population only. So they're not going to do the households and the housing units and the jobs. They do do it by age and race and ethnicity. But key is that the Weldon Cooper population forecasts are used by the Falls Church schools to do enrollment projections. So that's why we wanted to see how, I mean, we're not, it's not how close, but sort of how are these comparing with these different approaches? And then finally, we thought, well, what if we took a little bit different approach where this is almost like sort of a, the first method is sort of a supply-based, you know, what kinds of commercial space and residential space on the ground would produce people and jobs? And then the second one is, as we'll talk about, is more a recent past and demographics-based sort of trend method. And the third, we thought, well, what if we took a little bit different approach and said, you know, the city of Falls Church is part of the greater region. And let's imagine that the region grew in a certain way. What share of that growth might be appropriate for the city of Falls Church? And for that, we looked just at households and because we wanted to see what level of household growth might represent the share in the city of Falls Church to accommodate future regional job growth. So that was sort of that approach. If we're going to grow jobs, where are those folks going to live? What share will be in Falls Church? Those are the three approaches that we went into. So we'll go to the first one. And again, I'm just going to be very brief here, but there's a sort of multi-step process here. We use 2010 as our base because that was the last census, as you have probably heard in the media. We are getting geared up for the 2020 census. But the 2010 census is the best base estimate, so we build up from there. And we look at five-year increments at the number of net new housing units that have been delivered or that have been approved. And then we make some assumptions about future growth outside of what's in the pipeline. We're able to take housing units and get to households by applying vacancy rates, and then from households to people by applying average household sizes. And we can talk a little bit more about that as we go forward. Next slide. The employment is very similar: new commercial space, retail office, and my favorite category, other, and motel hotel. Other in our forecasts include a movie theater, for example. There's a movie theater in the projected forecast. And then sometimes there's other space, healthcare space, that would fall in other. We look at the number of net new jobs associated with that new space by using assumptions about square footage per employee. We also make some estimates about how job gains and losses might fluctuate at existing businesses over the business cycle, and that gets folded in. And again, then we start with 2010 as our base. So, ta-da, the answers. Let's go to the answer that's next. Oh, no, sorry, sorry, I got ahead of myself here. So these are some of the assumptions that we made. We assumed that vacancy rates, again, that's how we get from housing units to households, are, as you can see here, they're based on recent trends from the census and some other sources. Average household sizes for net new construction, so that's apartments, condos, seniors, and rental townhomes. And then we also, given what we learned about the change in average household sizes in existing single-family homes, we actually allowed the single-family average household size to fluctuate over time. And then you can see the employees per 1,000 square feet of commercial space is down below. So we can look at the final numbers here. That's very exciting. So, and I should have had my computer up so that I could be ready to answer questions about details. But the 2010 numbers are from the census and for jobs, they're from a combo of Virginia Employment Commission, BEA, and the city. There were 12,332 folks, people, residents, according to the 2010 census. These 35-year projections put the population at 20,549 in 2045. You can see down below, the yellow is households, 5,100 in 2010, about 5,384 now or in 2015, and then up to 9,300 in 2045. The blue is jobs, and you can see the jobs, the number of jobs and the number of people were about the same in 2010. There was a little bit of a lag in job growth projected because of the types of projects that have been approved and are currently in the pipeline that are more heavily skewed towards residential. So you get a little bit less commercial in the immediate pipeline. And then, for example, in the West Falls Church project, the phasing has the residential first and the commercial later. So that's why we see the commercial job growth bopping up there in the 2025 to 2030 period. But you can see by 2045, we get to the same situation where there's this numeric balance between residents and jobs in the city of Falls Church. If we go to, and we can come back to this slide, but just if we go to the next slide, as I mentioned, this is the way that the city has done these forecasts since the 1970s. And so everyone is always curious, well, how good are these? Right? How close do you get? And so this chart is a little bit hard to explain, but each bar represents the estimate from that round of forecasts for that time period. So that blue bar is, in 1976, the forecast said that there'd be 14,000 residents in 1990. So that's what they said in 1976. So that was when suburbanization was like taking hold. It was right after the Vietnam War. There was lots of growth going on in the Virginia suburbs. But you can see that in later rounds, in the 80s and 90s, the forecasts, or the 80s, the forecasts, as you get closer, you get closer because you get a little bit more sure. So if you look at, for example, round 6A, which was done in 1998, that round forecasted 10,700 residents, but indeed, there were 12,332. I'll go through the other two slides very quickly, but the common theme is these forecasts consistently under-forecast people and over-forecast jobs. And that is not only true for the city of Falls Church, it is true for every single jurisdiction in the Washington DC area. Everybody wants jobs. And people don't want people in general. So, and if you go to the households very quickly, the pattern is very similar, so I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. But for example, in 1998, 4,900 households was what the forecast was for 2010, and it was 5,100. And then on the final slide, there were, I take that back, there were under-projections for jobs as well in 2010 and for 2019. So while I mentioned that the jobs were over-projected for Falls Church, the jobs were over-projected for the region, but not for the city of Falls Church. And so there was an under-projection there as well. So to answer the question, how well do these forecasts do? I think you do better the closer you are to the forecast date. And there's some consistency across those forecasts. I think there's one more slide maybe to show before, I'll pause before going on to the next, the next method. But what this shows for jobs in yellow, households in red, and households in orange, I was in, I've been, I was in Williamsburg all day. I just drove back from, my brain is a little fuzzy. Jobs are yellow, households are blue, population are red. And the percentages show the average annual percentage change for each of those things. So you can see in the 2025 to 2030 period, for example, the growth rate, the annual growth rate for jobs, for example, is quite high. And as I mentioned, that's the West Falls Church project coming online. That's the x,000 square feet of, and I should get my notes to have those numbers, coming online. The overall 35-year period, the forecasts are pretty similar to what we've seen in the recent past in terms of annual percentage change, but there's variability across the time period because of when projects are scheduled to come online. And so I'm going to stop there and see what initial questions there might be, or maybe I should keep going. It's up to you all if you want to ask a question, or I can just go on to the next things.
Well, on the last one, was your advice then that we should be skeptical of those growth projections for jobs since they are chronically overestimated?
No, I was wrong about that. You guys don't overestimate them. So if we go back to that job one, if you wouldn't mind, Jeff? So in 2010, the BLS reported there were 12,332. So in 2010, the BLS reported there were 12,300 jobs in the city. So that's the black at the top. In 1998, the forecasts were only for 9,500.
Those are BLS ones?
No, no, those are the COG ones that the city does. So I misspoke when I said that the city has overestimated jobs, the region does. The city has consistently underestimated job growth. So, well, and I think part of it is, when you're underestimating jobs and underestimating people, what you're doing is underestimating development overall, right? Sort of undercutting what might come online. So I would think that the forecasts that we have out, most of the job growth numbers are associated with projects that have already been approved. I don't know, I feel, and Paul and I, we have talked about it, and we feel pretty comfortable with those numbers. And we'll see the population, households, we'll see some comparisons. We don't have a comparison with jobs, though, so that's.
There's certainly a high degree of confidence in the first several years with this strategy because you're looking at the development pipeline, and the development pipeline at this point is approved. Founder's Row is under construction and will be for about three and a half years. West Falls Church, I think, because it's paired with the high school, and it's already gone through an RFP process to identify what are the major community concerns within the project, I think both of those are going to move forward with a high degree of certainty. The specifics of what Falls Church will look like, or West Falls Church looks like, will still be borne out by the public process. But the sense that something will happen is fairly easy to work with. I think it's, as Lisa said earlier, the further out you get with projections, the more fuzzy they get, and that's the reason for applying multiple different types of projections. So looking at the same question with multiple different mechanisms gives you a sense of, where am I likely to end in terms of a range of possibilities, and how do I want to plan for that accordingly?
Yeah, and look, I would suggest that 1998, the development, the willingness to consider development in the City of Falls Church was considerably different than five years beyond that even, and that, you know, this sort of open-for-business kind of concept didn't come online until 2002, 2003 in Falls Church. And that if you were projecting based on 1998, we were not interested. So this would be off on the development side, just because of how we'd operated for the previous 40 years, as opposed to how we've operated for the last 15.
Yep, that's fair. And one, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
That, to me, would be very interesting, because we didn't do anything previous to about 2004. And then from there on in, we added a lot of new residents, new, you know, housing types and everything else, because for that, before that, forget about it, it was all single-family and nothing going on. So 2000 to 2019, where we are now, would be a very interesting growth pattern.
For future presentations, then, we'll show the Round 8 projections, since there was only one data point to compare it to, you can only compare it to 2010 since, we didn't put it on there, but I think that's a good point to make, that the environment is just quite different than in 1998. So if we wanted to talk about reliability, we might look at a more recent time period.
Do you, do you guys count people who work out of their homes, and is that factored into projections at all?
Ah, so about working, people who work out of their homes? No. So the entire process, this approach, and again, this is the way it's been done for a while, uses commercial space. Yeah. And so this is why we're here, to think about these other things, and whether.
Well, partially just in general, but also as a trend, I mean, with technology and commute problems, more and more people work out of their homes.
Yeah. And what we've struggled with is, the share of people who work 100% out of their homes is actually pretty small, right? So that we wouldn't want to count someone who telecommuted.
Well, sure, but it's small, but like, I have a business, and we have an office, and we have 70 people, and I think six people work full-time out of their homes in other cities and things like that, so it's almost 10%.
Totally. No, I think you're right, and I think, as you're probably rightly pointing out, that depending on the industry, you'll have a greater share of it. So, yeah, I think that's something worthwhile to look at. It's not something we've incorporated in the past. That's a really good suggestion. Any other questions or thoughts on the initial?
Just one comment, kind of jumps out to me in looking at the data. It seems like we've, in a way, we've kind of baked in a dependence on transportation, because we've got a population whose income is at one level, workers that are lower levels, so both are having to, in effect, go outside of Falls Church to meet their needs. So that may be an observation worthwhile making at some point.
No, that's really good. And we're actually going to make, as we talk about connections, if you wouldn't mind, I might come back and have you make that point again, because one of the questions we'll ask is, you know, when we think about what these forecasts might suggest for economic development, there's a lot of office space coming along, are the types of jobs that are being sort of recruited for that office space?
Consistent with who lives here.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. If, so if we go into the, oh, so we're, if you go back, I'm sorry, Jeff, but we wanted to compare those growth rates to what other communities, this is a very exciting slide, to what other communities had forecasted in the last round. But we found when we threw Arlington in there, or Alexandria in there, or even the City of Fairfax, they just aren't the right-sized geographies to compare to the City of Falls Church. And so what we want to look at is the activity centers that COG has defined. So they've defined these, and Falls Church is an activity center, and we haven't gotten the data from COG yet, so we are working to get that, to see how those forecasts of other sort of activity centers, maybe near a metro station, to see how they're projecting growth over time. More to come on that. So the, as you well know, Weldon Cooper Center at the University of Virginia produces population forecasts for all the counties and independent cities across the state, and they use a different approach. So they're not taking into account building permit data or extrapol, or looking at development pipeline, but rather, they're using what is called the Hamilton Perry Method. But what they're doing is, they're looking at the demographics of a population and the age structure of a population, and basically allowing the population to age over time, and making assumptions about births and deaths, and making assumptions about in-and-out migration in order to produce population forecasts for each community, which they then control against a statewide population projection so that it doesn't add up to more than the state. So the reason I say that is, it's definitely more of a person-based set of forecasts, and it's based on looking at the age structure now and making assumptions about people aging, staying in place, or leaving the city at the same rates that they've left before. These are the forecast of population growth, and as I mentioned, they do it not only overall population forecasts, but also age groups, and so that's where the city starts for their school enrollment projections. 2045, a projection of 21,629. On the next slide, you can see that's pretty close to what the development-based forecasts were, meaning there's some consistency in what the forecasts, using the method I just described, and what the University of Virginia forecasts are showing. That's, in my opinion, that was a good thing, right? There's, it would have been harder to explain how they could be so wildly different. I know there's been some criticisms, well, not criticisms, but just, I know that, for example, Weldon Cooper showed Arlington losing population in their last round of forecasts, and of course, that was not the case, and so this is kind of nice that it's close. Yeah, please, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I think, this has always been interesting to me because the Weldon Cooper approach, because if we didn't build an apartment building, for example, there's zero chance we hit the Weldon Cooper number, so.
Correct.
And at some point, the city will just max out, like, we won't, unless we tear down single-family homes and start building.
Sure.
High-rises, so, I don't know, I sort of, I sort of felt like Weldon Cooper's gotten lucky in the City of Falls Church. Just because it doesn't seem, it's a logical methodology for a place like Fairfax County or Arlington, but for a place where you're so physically constrained, like, to the point where you could just count them, it always seemed weird to do it that way.
Yeah. I agree, especially because it, I agree with you, I think this method works better for bigger places, and this sort of.
Because you figure, well, you know, the region's growing, whatever, the, okay, they'll build some housing for those people, but we don't really, I mean, we have a few places, and we've kind of lined them all up.
Right.
And so maybe we get, that's still, we're more than 1,000 short of the Weldon Cooper, but, so I don't know.
Yeah, no, but even to your point, right, so it is 1,000 lower, but to your point, there is development capacity left in the city.
Right, sure.
Yeah, so.
And I think, you know, obviously, things could change, but under the relatively current circumstances, our population will be as many, as many housing units as we build. You know, I don't, it'd be interesting and scary to see a time when people wouldn't come and live in Falls Church, but.
Yeah. So what you're saying is, the constraint is not demand, which is actually where we're going to next.
Yeah, supply, which, for the most part, we control. So I've always sort of felt like we can control the population for the next 30 years, just by deciding how much housing we're willing to build, because there's no, there's no by-right way to greatly increase our housing stock. It's all stuff we can control. And so I think, which is, which is nice, I mean, we should just recognize that and factor that into our plans, I think.
Well, that's, that's true in bigger jurisdictions as well, to some degree.
To some degree.
Fairfax and Arlington, you know, could decide to, you know, upzone a whole bunch of low-density, and most of their land is devoted to low-density residential, but they, you know, so that's kind of true region-wide, that there's an artificial cap on, on housing that's, you know, zoning issue, and that's a policy issue, and.
Yeah, I'm just saying, in Falls Church, it's a very, it's a much more precise thing.
Oh, right, yes, you're right.
You can get down to 100, 100.
You could almost, right, right. You could, you could actually go ahead and count everybody. Figure it out exactly.
And then also, the size of the units that we're producing.
Yeah.
That's the thing that we're producing more of than single-family houses, although the single-family houses are getting to be larger and larger with the hair downs. But that's what we're getting, the average three kids versus, you know, other things.
If you don't mind, I'd love to pick up on this point just a little bit that you were making, Mr. Rankin?
Yeah.
Because one of the things we're doing tonight is talking about these connections, and this, I, this idea of being able to control development, I think, is really an interesting one, and this, the projections being tied to supply. I wonder what, I wonder what the thought is about how demand does come into play, right? The type of community that you build will also either attract or not attract people, right? So I'm just curious about that.
Well, and I think we, one of the things we know is, demand is high for a certain kind of housing because of our school system, and if we did things to not support that, that could affect demand easily and change this math.
Yeah.
I do think on the apartment side, I mean, that that is a good question right now, you could build an apartment building and fill it up, but that may change based on regional stuff, so I don't think it's quite as simple as assuming we can always build an apartment building and fill it up, but.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think the things that we can't control are, for example, okay, now we have bigger houses, so now instead of 1.7 kids per household, we now have 3.6 or something, and that can dramatically affect our school costs and things like that. So those things we can't control.
Yeah.
But I think relate to demand and what's going on.
That makes sense.
Also, I do think that we're trying to create a different type of demographics as far as population goes, too. We're trying to hopefully keep those of us who are aging out, which we're not doing a very good job of, but hopefully, so we've got some new products coming along. And then also, we're trying to increase the population, say, in the, you know, the late 20s, 30s, you know, without the families, more money to spend with the restaurants and everything like that. So definitely, the population has changed, the differences in the population have changed due to the kind of units we've been building and due to the development we've done since 2000.
As we go to the last method, and just sort of, we can come back to these connections, because I think it's really interesting. This is the approach that is in the most draft form, but I do think it would be interesting, I'd love to get your feedback on this idea. So another way to think about forecasts is to really zero in on the demand side of it, and so this is a forecast produced by the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments of the number of households that would be needed in the region to accommodate job growth. So this is basically taking regional job growth forecasts as sort of given, which we can talk about whether that's appropriate, but, and saying, how many housing units would be needed in order to ensure that all the workers that you want to have come over the next 35 years would have a place to live, or 25 years would have a place to live? What, why, the reason COG did this was, they wanted to show that these numbers here are greater than when you sum up all the region's housing unit forecasts. So these numbers are more than what the communities in the region are planning for. That's the reason they did this.
Was this before or after Amazon?
So all of this is pre-Amazon, so we're going to come back to that issue, because I think that's a really good one for us to talk about tonight, because they produced these last year, and Amazon's such a recent phenomenon. But we can make some guesses here tonight about what, how they might change. If you looked at the next slide, can you see Falls Church on there?
I just want to make sure.
I almost like hesitated putting this draft version of this up. So the City of Falls Church is a really small part of the region. Now, let me remind you, the WashCOG region, or the DC metropolitan region, is, I think we're up to 25 jurisdictions in Maryland, Virginia, and a couple in West Virginia. It's a big region. The City of Falls Church population is about 0.3% of the regional population. So on the next slide, we've kind of blown it up a little bit, and we can see that if you took the regional sort of job-driven housing demand forecasts and apportioned Falls Church's share in the same share that it is now, meaning when you look at what the cooperative forecasts say, and it says, going forward, the city is between 0.3 and 0.5% of the households, applying those shares to these employment-driven housing demand forecasts, assume these net-new housing units in the city over those five-year periods.
Based on the current share of.
Exactly, right. So, and I'll come back to that point, right? Based on current, well, based on current share, and then when you look at the current round of cooperative forecasts, how that current share is changing. And then on the next slide, the development-based ones that we started with, remember the ones that are based on what's been approved, what's in the pipeline? Those are the blue bars on the left, the ones I just showed you, the employment-driven housing demand forecasts, Falls Church's share, are on the right.
So we're outstripping.
But.
We're doing our job here.
This is why I hesitate to put this up here. But what this doesn't account for is, it doesn't account for where those net-new jobs that are driving housing demand are going to be located. It assumes they are distributed around the region in the same way households are, and we know that's not true. Just to use Amazon as the most dramatic example, you could imagine that when Amazon does come, that the demand for housing and the sort of projected, yeah, demand for housing will be greater, as we've seen in Arlington, Alexandria, Falls Church, close in Fairfax, and certainly the rest of the region.
Than West Virginia.
Than in West Virginia, or then in Frederick, Maryland, or Charles County, Maryland. And so what we're going to do on this next go-around is, we're going to take a closer look at where those jobs are projected to come. And so, for example, the fact that more job growth will be in the Crystal City area, more job growth will be in Tysons, like relatively concentrated in Tysons, that will mean that the numbers for the city really will end up higher than those bars on the right that we're seeing now. But that's the approach we're sort of thinking about to help have this conversation, is to answer that question you just raised, are we close to what that regional sort of fair share, that's the wrong word, but sort of that regional share would be if you looked at the housing needed for jobs?
Yeah, I think that that's important. This, to me, looks misleading.
Yeah.
And would be misleading to the public.
We debated it.
Who would say, look, you're growing faster than.
We're going to empty apartments by 2045.
Yeah, yeah.
This could be definitely misread.
But it starts with a low base.
It does.
Right, so we were low-density, so.
Totally. It does, and again, we're talking about a region of 4 million people, so it's, and when we are talking about 14,000, you're right.
And most of, and then most of that 2020 has already occurred.
Has already been approved, so we'll be finished in the next few years.
Right.
Right, yep. Okay, but, so here's the but, on the next slide, oh no, what happened to all our percentages?
I have it on my packet.
There's a second slide.
Are they on the, do you guys have them? Okay, good. Okay, go back one.
If you jump one more slide.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
None of them are, no, there's no percentages, they all have category name in them.
I can read them out, or you have.
I have them here, yeah.
I got them.
So go back one, although the surprise, it's not, it's big a surprise without them. So what the Washington, what the WashCOG forecasts were able to allow analysts to do, so George Mason looked and said, okay, that's great, you need all these housing units, but what income levels would those folks be at, right? Because that's what's important. A $25,000-a-year job is different than an Amazon $150,000-a-year job. So those forecasts of regional job growth were broken out by industry, and you then can apply wages. those forecasts of regional job growth were broken out by industry, and you then can apply wages. And so what this beautiful pie chart shows you is the biggest slice, fifty-six percent, um, are, uh, households that are, uh, at, uh, above a hundred percent of the area median income. This is a PDF version? Oh, awesome.
Yeah, I'm going to use this instead.
Awesome. Um, so, okay, can you go back one though? Sorry, just to make it, so we only have one, one, okay, yeah. Okay, all right. So ignore the units just for a minute, because it's really the shares we're most interested in. Looking ahead, over the twenty-fifteen to twenty-forty-five period, uh, for the city of Falls Church, this is an estimate of the breakdown of household incomes that would demand housing in the city based on the types of jobs that are coming to the region, based on some high-level assumptions about commuting. We can go more into more detail of that, but you can see that more than half are above median income, sorry. And then you can see, uh, the dark blue are folks at below thirty percent of area median income, which for a family of four is about thirty-five thousand dollars. Does this make sense? There's too many numbers all at once.
But that really makes sense in our need for affordable housing.
Ah, okay, so you're getting.
And that is something that, you know, a lot of us are very, very, uh, talked and set up and very insistent and growing somehow, and it's been a difficult
Challenge.
figure it out.
So if we go to the next slide, um, this is the stock. So the stock of housing, housing by household income is on the right. Seven, nearly three-quarters of households currently living in the city of Falls Church have incomes above that hundred percent AMI. And the real deficit is actually in what has, I think, been called by many people, the missing middle households between thirty and a hundred percent of area median income. And so while the, I think there's still some work that we need to do on this demand-based approach, I feel like this, getting to your point, this understanding not only how many households might be generated by new jobs, but where they fall in this income distribution.
And that, that tends to be exactly what we're running into when our, um, affordable units and, uh, the new projects are. That we're having trouble particularly, uh, in the fifty to eighty.
Yep.
In the two blues.
Yep, right.
And that's where we're having the most difficulty in having the units available for the, and, and we kind of need this over the housing se- uh, side of things. We need this information, because they are floundering, floundering right now without the necessary information, because I went to the latest Housing Commission and everything is just like. So I would imagine this would be very important.
So, so, so I can understand that. So this is saying that, um, our current breakdown is close to seventy-three percent of our current household distribution is in this a hundred percent or more. But that the demand that we see over time is, would be a smaller s- slice. And the challenge is, and we can do what we want about trying to create affordable units, the challenge is we just don't have any housing stock that's appropriate for market rate for people that make this
Right.
thirty to eighty percent AMI, just doesn't exist in Falls Church.
Uh, so, so there is, so this isn't, this, this doesn't specify whether it's rental ownership.
Well, I guess my point is, if I made eighty percent AMI, I can't afford to live in Falls Church, because the, that, that kind of unit doesn't exist. Because the single-family homes are all super expensive.
Uh-huh.
And the apartments are pretty high-end.
Right.
And we have a couple of, you know, whatever, six percent, you know, we've got these older apartments that maybe I could fit in. And that, the challenge here is that you can't, anything you build new is going to either be an expensive apartment or somehow subsidized. This is the, this is where we don't, you know.
Yeah.
Have a lot of options, I guess.
This was largely the conversation at the last Housing Commission meeting, and they have nothing really solid to build on. Not meaning builds, right, build, but to start from, they don't have that kind of information.
Well, and to, if we couldn't, if you wouldn't mind, if we could go to the next, um, slide, just, or the next one, because um, these are exactly the questions, right, that we're hoping that the forecast will help us think through, not only for the sake of thinking them through, but also for the sake of planning for housing, for planning for economic development, and planning for public facilities. So those are our three areas. And so these are the questions that you guys have just been raising, you know, uh, is the city planning for the right amount, the right types? We've already mentioned that the, uh, new construction is really highly focused on multifamily housing and rental housing, and what's the implications of that shift from a community that was predominantly single-family detached to one where a majority of housing units, housing units are now in the multifamily, uh, sector, and who might be excluded, to your point, given the stock and what is projected? What happens if, uh, new home construction slows down regionally, and then how does Amazon impact the demand for housing? Those were my ques- our questions, but, but we wanted to put it out to you to say, what are the questions that you have, and how can we make sure that we have the right information that we're providing to the city to help answer those questions? And, and then you've, you've addressed some of them for the housing, for the housing planning, needing to know where the demand is and where those incomes are, and maybe where the housing types, household types are.
And then try to get the products that would fit that, which, you know, such as, you know, the condos or apartments without amenities and that type of thing that would lower the rents on them. And but with the, the land prices of values around here, whoa.
Yeah, I mean, if you go back to the, the pie chart, where we're a hundred, uh, seventy-three percent is the hundred percent AMI, I, I appreciate that the forecast is saying this is a demand, but I don't see, I see this number only going up from seventy-three percent to something higher. I mean, it, it, not that real estate can't change over time, of course, and demand can change, but, you know, when I look out, it's, to me, it's a sort of self-fulfilling prophecy or, you know, a, a feedback loop that continues to, to increase that percentage. As long as we do our part, which is to continue to invest in the schools and the community at some reasonable level, the, the land values are so high that if you're going to purchase that land, then you need to put up, you know, a nicer unit, and that's what we're seeing developers do. Uh, they, they don't want to come in and, and, and offer this product, especially since there's been recently so much success in the multifamily high-end units. I was part of a committee for the West End, for where we are now, and, uh, both applicants are like, we can get crazy rents here. And that's the kind of products that they're selling, and in a two-point-two square miles where you have wonderful school.
Sure.
Yeah, exactly. There's no place where you're like, I'm going to hide this. Every, every square inch is, is accounted for. So while the demand may shift in this direction, um, I don't see the products being offered to accommodate it, unless you have a policy change that says, you know, we are, this is really important to us, and therefore we're going to, a- as Andy says, sort of, uh, you know, subsidize it, because it's not going to come on to, in the near future, like, again, the certainty period, the ten-year period, I don't see this happening, is my own view of it.
I also think that that percentage is going to be different, because so many people are living with so much more of the percentage of income going towards housing than what is normal. And, uh, so that really, a lot of that, those people living in that really don't have the a hundred percent of AMI. So I think you're going to see a shift, if you really, really got into it, that that, um, that eighty to a hundred percent is.
One thing I might throw out there, just to be provocative, since it's late and I've been driving all day and I'm feeling a little loopy. You know, I think about a place like the city of Minneapolis, right, that just changed their zoning code to allow triplexes by right in every single neighborhood, family neighborhood. So to your point about there not being the ability to take, to sort of figure out this land cost issue to deliver lower-cost housing, that's the approach Minneapolis is deciding to take.
Well, and the challenge that we face, which is always awkward to talk about, is that we, we could allow people to build townhouses now
Sure.
and create more affordable, but that, that will come with more students, and we don't have the commercial tax base to support it. So our tax rate will go up, or the schools would suffer, and it's this careful balance. So we certainly could allow uh, higher-density units that made them more affordable. But if they're not these like relatively high-end apartments, we're going to get a lot of school kids, which, again, is fine, but that then quickly affects our tax, uh, rate and, and our, our tax base isn't built to support it. So I don't know what Minneapolis's, this tax base is like. But that is our ultimate challenge, is that we don't have Arlington's, uh, commercial tax base to support, um, that kind of thing, and so we're kind of trying to walk this fine line. Um, which is sort of, you know, the sort of funny thing about it is like you could, if you, if we were more willing to do even more dense, redevelopment of these apartments, you could afford to, to also do more family-friendly, lower-cost things, but, but people are, you know, they don't want that either, so. You know, the ma- the math's not that hard, you just got to figure which.
Ultimately, it's a, it's a policy decision, and I think, I'd argue that the city gets ultimately the, the, you know, the housing net, you know, the, the that's, 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 we elect the city council, and, you know, if it was, I, I'd argue we get exactly what we sort of want. We may not want to say it, but I'd argue that, you know, there's not the appetite out there to allow right-by-right in the single-family neighborhoods, you know, to have duplexes and triplexes. I, I, you know, I'd argue that wouldn't be there, and I'd argue, you know, so it's, it's, it is a difficult thing, because I, I think on the one hand, a lot of people, if you, if you ask people, you know, do you think affordable housing is important at a macro level, everyone's going to say yes. But then if you say, okay, that means now in your street, you know, we're, we're going to have, uh, you know, we're going to build some townhouses where there used to be single-family homes, and it's going to be all, um, people, you know, thirty to fifty percent AMI.
And by the way, your taxes are going to go up.
Right, and, you know, then all of a sudden,
Right.
well, you know, then all of a sudden it changes, and so I would argue that we kind of, we're kind of, we, we get what I think the will of the city ultimately wants. I mean, it shakes out that way.
And our zoning supports it.
Right, and so now that's a policy decision. Now that can change, and these things run in cycles, and, and there may, things can change, but yeah, I don't know. I think, I think it's going to be, I mean, it's going to be hard, I think, to dramatically change our trajectory as.
But change does seem to be dramatic. Looking at the numbers, just the last five years, we're at the top in the region in households living alone, or single, so by far.
In growth, yeah.
Not even close.
Growth, yep.
Households, um, with children were way at the bottom.
In terms of growth, yep.
So, I mean, these changes are, are happening, and they are dramatic, right? So I don't know if it's just a matter of more units, it's the right type of units.
Right.
Because the increase, because we are still seeing increase in school-age kids that are in the single family.
That's right.
So it, so it's not just the, uh, abstract amount of units, it's the right kind of.
That's right.
That has to be the thing.
Right, but the, but.
By creating these different layers of demographics.
Right, but what I'm saying is market forces aren't going to support the right types of units.
I agree.
It would take commitment from us, financial commitment from.
The market, left to its own, will never provide, right, truly affordable housing. That's why it's often, you know, it's, it's.
But I'm saying, e- but I'm saying even because of our location and our constraints, market forces won't even provide for, sort of naturally for a lot of it. Like, you know, if we, if we could annex a chunk of Seven Corners, we've got lots of affordable housing, but, but we don't, you know, so that's, that, that, that's the true challenge, is that we don't, because we're so constrained, we could have policies that provide for it, but we'd have to support that with policies that provide for greater density to pay for it, or we'd have to just pay for it through taxes.
You raise a great, you raise a great point, actually. You know, we are all inherited, you know, arbitrary boundary. We're a small subset, we're a small, uh, jurisdiction. We, you know, there's a history to how Falls Church was incorporated as a town, how it was then incorporated as a city, and how the boundaries were.
And no metro.
Right, and how boundaries were drawn, and, and what, you know, the land was sort of like when the boundaries were drawn in nineteen forty-nine. And so there's, you know, we kind of have inherited that, you're right. I mean, and so, you know, arguably, like, if the boundaries had been drawn differently, or you guys, I'm sure some folks on the commission probably know the history, the town of Falls Church prior to nineteen forty-nine had a different boundary, much larger boundary, took in different areas. If we still incorporated those areas that were, if anyone's ever looked at the old town boundaries, right, pre-forty-nine, we would be, our demographics would be very different. Um, so we've kind of inherited that, and it kind of put us in a difficult position to try to, you know, meet some of those goals, because of the, right, if we had Seven Corners and some of that area, and areas south of Lee Highway, um, we're all part of the town of Falls Church.
But on, in that era, though, you also had much smaller single-family houses, plus the fact that all of the town hills, townhouses down at Cherry Hill were once all the size of the affordable units down there. And then they were, some of them were remodeled, but they tore down. Half of that old project that put in the townhouse.
And that's where we're also heavily influenced by regional changes, because, you know, thirty years ago, there was plenty of space around us, but now it's all built up around us too, so it's not like there's many options.
And we're, we're a small little jurisdiction where, like, like, I don't know that we need to solve the ills of the region here. I mean, we have this unique area of land. I mean, I want affordable housing, I'm supportive of that policy. I think it's an important part of, you know, diverse, housing diversity and, and and, uh, general diversity as a whole, but to everybody's point here, I mean, it's just down the street. It's, it's, I don't feel disconnected from it in a way that perhaps I would if we had, if we're just saying, you know, we're inside this gated community of a city. I don't feel that way at all. Uh, but, um, so I, I, I sort of tend to agree that we're on this trajectory, and unless something changes dramatically, we're going to stay on it for, for a while.
So if I could, just to interject this, uh, now, this slide is really talking about, uh, housing costs and affordability, but the idea of simply housing supply has been a, a, a topic of discussion at the Council of Governments, the COG Planning Directors Meeting, as well as the Housing Directors Meeting, because it's not just Falls Church that is short on future housing supply. Uh, it is, uh, the region as a whole is short on future housing supply, and the way the region has addressed that problem in the past is to say, ah, the housing will just go further west, or it'll go further south, or it'll go for, it'll go somewhere else, but it won't go here. Uh, and so the, the same thing has been said by small jurisdictions, big jurisdictions, medium-sized jurisdictions, and so the end result has been, um, the, the, already the, the topic of, uh, transportation came up. The effect has been longer and longer commutes and travel times, more congestion, people driving through other people's neighborhoods to get to where they're trying to go. Um, now, this slide is talking about the impacts of affordability on some of these decisions, that there is, um, less housing supply than people would otherwise want in some of these desirable locations. Arlington, as an entire county, has, has some of those problems dealing with housing affordability. Falls Church has it, of course, is a much smaller place. So I think, uh, you know, the last few slides in this presentation are talking about connections. And, um, here, right, one of the connections we've been talking about already is the, the connection to housing. So when you look at demographic projections, and when you look at what that means for the housing market, what does it mean for the future of the city? And some of this goes back to what was in that vision statement that the city adopted in twenty seventeen, when it talked about being an inclusive community. The Housing Chapter, which kicked off, uh, several months ago, what's being worked into that draft vision statement is the idea that Falls Church should be a complete community that provides housing options for folks of all abilities, all ages, all incomes. And so I think you would see in that Housing Chapter, what you would see is some policy levers that could be pulled. Whether the community wants to advance some of those actions and delay others, that would be a policy discussion. Uh, but it would be similar to how the other comprehensive plan chapters have been handled. So Transportation looked at, what do we want to do with Transportation, and it looked at projects and policies that could be implemented. Parks for People was the same thing. It looked at, what are the investments to make in parks? Uh, we could do the same thing with, with housing, with public facilities, with economic development. You would look at, where is the city going? Is that consistent with the vision that the city adopted for itself in twenty seventeen? And what, what policy changes need to happen, and what, what policy changes are folks willing to take on, uh, in order to make that happen?
Paul, did we want to just, I know, I'm sensitive to your time. You've had a long meeting, and we have more to go, but just the other, um, we'd focused on housing, but on, on, there are these connections related to economic development, Mr. Stevens, that you brought up about, uh, attracting businesses that might include jobs that we don't have in great numbers in the city, and is the, is the types of office space being approved appropriate? Are there opportunities to build off regional job growth to attract different kinds of businesses? You know, how many new residents are needed? If, uh, if we want jobs in, say, a diverse, um, sort of set of retail and restaurant offerings, for example, are there implications for needing a certain number of residents to support that type of growth? Implications, as was mentioned here, about property taxes. If indeed the commercial base is expanded, does that free up some opportunities, um, that might not be, uh, otherwise able to achieve? Yeah, exactly. Um, what if there's a slowdown? What happens if, what happens if the working age population in the city doesn't grow? We know a lot of folks who live in the city don't work here, but are there implications for a population where the demographics move, um, older, or maybe older and younger with that, and if the middle doesn't? Imagine folks in single-family houses, imagine they stay and, and age in place, and then the new stuff is attracting the childless twenty-somethings. What happens if that middle, all of a sudden, school overcrowding is not the issue anymore, maybe, but what, what would be the implications?
And that did happen to us. And that did happen to us at one time, in the early eighties.
Yep.
When we had to close schools.
Yep.
And because we dropped down to only twelve hundred students, which was outrageous loss.
And then, I'm, I'm interested in hearing more, I'm sure you all, too, over time, on what Amazon might have in terms of implications for spinoff economic activity in the city. So, again, housing is one set of connections, but I think there's all these other economic development connections. And then, on the last slide, just to put them all out there, the things we thought about is, yeah, we thought really, we thought a lot about what these forecasts might suggest for school enrollment, what different types of housing stock might mean for those enrollment projections. You know, what does this growth, projected growth mean for other public facilities? Does the city have those facilities and the infrastructure to support the projected growth? And back to one of the points that was raised earlier, is this the right balance of residential and commercial growth that the city wants to see over the next thirty-five years? So, we put these questions out there to you, not because we have the answers, or we think they're the only questions, but we'd love any, yeah, they're big ones. And the demographics are just a means to have those conversations. They're not answers to, to the, to the questions.
I always, I also think it's worth always keeping in mind that, you know, we, we always have to work with the market, right? So, is the current planned development ideal for the city? I don't know, but it seems to be the best we've been able to get. So, I think that's something, when people think about these things, they're like, you know, even simple things like, oh, I want, why doesn't the city build a movie theater? It's like, the city's never building a movie theater. The question is, can we create an environment where the market will build a movie theater? And so, I think that's worth keeping in mind, that we can figure out what is the right balance, and then we figure out, how do we get closest to that balance with what, what we can manage with the market?
Yeah, with the tools you have to set the environment, right, to incentivize.
I mean, I, I think it's silly to try to say that this is gonna be stable all the way through. I mean, these, there's, there's, there's cycles to all of this, both the housing and the, the economy. But, you know, overall, I think, certainly in the near term, we have better sense of it. I think, though, if I were to, you know, look out, you know, in the next sort of ten years, I think what my sense is, is that things are gonna continue to, to grow and follow on the same trajectory. And it's for a variety of factors. One is that feedback, where the developers want to continue to bring in, they can get the higher amounts. And we saw in, you know, the big sort of recession of two thousand eight, or what do we call it, that, you know, this area was, it had some impact, but it was not the kind of impact that we're seeing throughout the country. It's pretty stable. Amazon coming in, I think, will only continue to solidify the fact that we're not just a government town. We've, we've been an IT town for a while as well, but this just sort of solidifies it. I think there's some additional add-on effects to that, that by Amazon being here, additional companies will want to be in that ecosystem of IT and, and high-end paying jobs. So, I think it's sort of in the near term, I think these projections, based on what I'm hearing in my own sort of work, this looks like it's projecting about twenty-four thousand units per year over the next five years, at a hundred and twenty-two thousand or something units in that period. So, it's roughly about twenty-four thousand.
Oh, for the region, you mean?
For the region. I'm, I'm, that, that's on the higher end than I've heard in my own, I've heard sort of more the fifteen to eighteen thousand a year.
Yeah.
But overall, I think we are, we're certainly not recession-proof, but we are in a really wonderful position as it relates to the region. And then, I would say that, like, on a really micro level, a lot of the developments that we've approved recently is starting to bring in a commercial element, that while that is reflected in your projections, I think we start to prove that this is a place where commercial development could survive and be effective. That has been a hard sell in the past. And finally, we have two developments who have, are committing, both here at West End, and then also the Insight Project, is putting in, you know, some real Class A commercial space. And that, once that happens, then it's more of the mix that I'd personally like to see.
Yeah.
This is me personally, I think, and, and it goes back to sort of a vibrant community all throughout the day, but also from a tax standpoint, right now, as we all know of residents here, we bear a very large proportion of that tax burden compared to cities like Arlington, and, and, or counties like Arlington. So, I actually think we're really on the right track, but, you know, there's also a lot of talk that we've been in a bull market, or generally speaking, for, you know, quite a while. So, some correction may happen. But overall, my sense is that we will fare well in that.
Yeah.
The new construction will help that. The new development we're bringing on, we've already have these commitments now, and so, we can withstand some of the, maybe the slowdown that happens. So, I mean, me personally, I've been saying this for a long time, that I'm really bullish about what we're doing here in the city, and the developments that are coming in, and the critical mass we're developing. Is it the right mix? That's a bigger question. But I think the strides that we've made as a city are really in the positive direction, both towards making us more recession-proof, but also increasing the miss, mix and reducing the tax burden. So, that's sort of a overarching piece to the, to these big questions.
I agree with you, but, you know, still say, oh, wait, shut down some big developments that I didn't plan.
Sure.
Oh, sure.
City center.
To the point of going. And, and that's never, so.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a tough time, but I mean, it's historically bad.
That was, yeah, absolutely.
I do just want to point out, if you go back to that, that slide, the slide twelve, on the, the projections of population versus employment, this is actually pretty remarkable to have employment levels this high in comparison to the population, right? Because there's a ratio of people to workers. And Lisa, I don't know if you have, you know, typical numbers for the region, but it's, you know, isn't it somewhere usually in sort of the two-thirds of, of the folks that are workforce-eligible are typically working?
Oh, the, like, the labor force participation rate?
Yeah.
Oh, it's very high here. It's closer to eighty percent of the working-age population is working.
But even still, if you compare the number of, of projected jobs versus the population...
Yeah, but those are at-place jobs. Those are jobs not held by the residents, though. They're held by lots of people.
Right.
Around the region. So, it's not quite as easy to make that. But one thing that is interesting is this, this balance between residents and jobs being so even. That is something that I think is makes Falls Church unique, certainly to other jurisdictions, but unique to even some of the activity centers, which are either residential activity centers or commercial activity centers. But I think that labor force, we might need to look into that a little bit. I'm not sure I know the answer exactly to that. Yeah.
We haven't used that Activity Center stuff from COG in a while.
They haven't updated it in a while, which I think is why it's taking me a long time to get the projections.
I mean, that came aboard, it was woof.
I know.
Here we got the big stuff in the world.
Yeah.
And then, we haven't heard anything about it. I'm just trying, one other thing, time we saw come back around. And Gary, can you remember when that we started talking about the COG Activity Center again?
It was a couple of years ago, when we were doing, like, some area planning. We were able to incorporate that in. And then, you know, it was significantly before that, maybe eight years back, that they did them originally. But we were participants at that time, and were able to designate the entire city. And it paid benefits, for instance, on this West Falls Church project, in terms of eligibility, on some grant stuff. And so, it's, it's been productive for us to have that designation.
So, these are big questions. I, and, you know, we're not...
What are the...
What do you, we're sort of out of time, because we do have another agenda item. How, how is this feedback, how do you see this process going for us to try to not only answer these questions, but guide where we're headed on our comprehensive plan demographics chapter?
Yeah. I'm gonna turn that question back to Paul, because I think there is a little bit of a roadmap for that.
Okay, great.
There is. So, as, as, as you know, the city has been updating its comprehensive plan on a chapter-by-chapter basis. And so, there were questions about what's going on with the Environment Chapter, what's going on with the Housing Chapter. At some point, there was a discussion about whether the city needed to review its Public Facilities Chapter. And so, this Demographics Chapter, as I said earlier, is intended to be a fact base or a, or a launch point for having those community conversations. So, the reason for highlighting those questions in the slides is not to answer them as part of the Demographics Chapter, but to motivate, what topics does the city, does the community want to tackle next? So, I think in terms of timeline, what's included in the staff report is coming back to the Planning Commission in May. And I think the expectation would be that there'd probably be a draft chapter that would include some of the projections that we've been talking about tonight, as well as some information from the Trends Report. And then, it might highlight or suggest a number of chapters or a number of questions to answer in subsequent efforts. But the idea would be, as with all the chapters, to record the state of the conversation, get a formal action from the Planning Commission and Council to declare the chapter update complete, and then tackle those unanswered questions in the next effort.
Okay. So, that's all reasonable. It's consistent with what we've done. Are we then interacting with the consultant anymore, or this is the end of our meetings with them? As, I, I just...
Oh, no, there's, there's, there's more. So, I think, I think they're on the hook to also draft the chapter.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, we'll get another chance, at least then, to, to interact.
And, and we'll be with the Housing Commission, or we'll be with some of the other commissions and boards over the next couple of months, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure we come back to this body, though, again, until May.
Oh, until May, though.
But we'll be back. Oh, yeah, we'll be back.
And that's, that's one of my big questions. How do we fold this into the, 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 the lack of knowledge in the Housing Commission? You know, they're flattering.
Yeah. And so, that's one of the things we've been thinking about, is, is, you know, this Demographics Chapter is fourteen years old, updated in two thousand and five. So, I think updating this chapter will be a great aid for the Housing Chapter update. At that point, at this point, the draft chapter has a good sense of community goals based on the Vision Chapter. It has a good sense of what's going on in the existing stock of housing. I think the pieces from tonight's presentation, and what gets formalized in the, what gets finalized in the adopted Demographics Chapter, will give a sense of what are the big housing needs and housing challenges, and what are the priorities? Is it preservation of existing stock? Is it opening up new kinds of housing development? What's the pace for housing development? What's the size of units that's needed? Is it more one-bedrooms? Is it three-bedrooms? Is it something else? And then, what are the policy levers that the city wants to explore? I think cottage housing was a, was a great success in terms of finding a way to, to fit a variety of housing types into an existing site and an existing environment. Those things aren't easy, and they involve conversation. And so, I think that's part of the reason for having these conversations, is what, what does the community want to tackle next?
However, one, one thing I'm interested about is, how soon can we work that information into what's going on now?
Sure. And...
Because I, because they, they want to reconstruct the wheel and everything, and that's ridiculous when we've got all this stuff.
Correct. And so, we've been coordinating at the staff level on what a schedule might look like. Included in the Commission's report, I think, from the last meeting or the meeting before, was the Planning Division Report. And it did map out what those comprehensive plan chapter updates are gonna look like. Demographics first, probably in the June-July timeframe. Environment Chapter after that, in, in July-August, and then Housing would follow after that. That there is a, there's a capacity on agendas, as well as in staff, that it's, this was the reason for the one-chapter-at-a-time approach, is that it allows for a complete community conversation about each topic.
All right. Well, let's have that community conversation at a later date.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This was, exactly, not later this evening. That was very informative, so I appreciate it very much. All right. Let's move on to, I believe, our last item.
I might suggest that we just need a couple of minutes. The applicants here in the other room, we need to set up the computer. I also have some of the key sheets in print here of the site plan for the high school, as well as a small eleven-by-seventeen color version of the elevations. I know you all got those electronically, but we wanted to have some hard copies available. So, they're here on the table, if you'd like to get up and get those. Maybe we can take a, just a brief five-minute recess?
Absolutely.
And then, we'll, we'll be set up shortly.
All right. I don't think we formally took a recess, but let's come back after that short commercial break. Let's resume. We have a staff report. Mr. Fuller, are you giving us the staff report, or?
Yes, yes. I have the staff report, and then we have a, a brief presentation from the applicant as background information. So, would you blank the background information first, and then the staff report, or?
Well, let me first announce what we're talking about.
Sure.
Which is gonna be George Mason High School site plan. But I think I would like to hear the staff report first, and then we'll move to the applicant.
All right. So, the, the application is the site plan for the proposed unplanned George Mason High School. And the, the board, the school board plans to redevelop the current George Mason High School site. And then, it'll include both the, the new high school and renovation, mainly interior to the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, and then appropriate connections to that school. The project highlights were listed in your staff report, which is a construction of a high school with a capacity up to fifteen hundred students, renovation of the middle school with a capacity of up to six hundred students, additional new multipurpose fields of different varieties, and then the retaining of, of other fields and so forth. A total of a little over four hundred parking spaces are proposed, which would meet the projected needs and code requirements. And then, there's another existing major structures and amenities that are remaining that are listed. And there is a phased development in, in that, the site plan that we're looking at for the new high school, and the selected field improvements, including the middle school renovation, would be done as part of this site plan that we're looking to approve this spring. And then, there would be a phase two, where additional requirements come online. For example, construction by others items that would include the parking garage, which would add approximately a hundred and eighty-seven parking spaces that are part of their calculations of the, the four hundred that are required. And, and so forth, there's some other pieces that are associated with that. And that was part of the review by staff. And in terms, terms of some of the key issues that we identified was the phasing and the post-new high school completion and the opening and interim provisions to meet the site plan that's before us. And those requirements, and the deferral of some of those requirements, for example, parking. The high school is projected to come online after the construction in January of twenty twenty-one. However, the adjacent development by others, let's call it, would involve the construction of a garage that would provide a, a number of the parking spaces, approximately a hundred and eighty-seven, that are required as part of the high school. So, there would need to be arrangements for interim parking. That's about an eighteen-month period, it's estimated, before that garage comes online. And there may be some opportunities to use that in a safe way, prior to full completion of it. But we, you know, that would be determined in the future. So, in terms of the phasing, and then, you know, making the off-site parking arrangements, and then also identifying, indicating other improvements provided by others. For instance, there's streetscape along Leesburg. And when I say others, not the applicant that's before us, it would be mostly the city, in terms of, the streetscape is, is part of the NVTA grant. And there's also subdivision, I'll talk about briefly, that's also required from a consolidation standpoint, that the city is also providing. And then, there's the coordination with the high school project and the West Falls Church Economic Development Project that's adjacent Ten Acres. And so, there's been bi-weekly, bi-monthly meetings in which these two parties, the school team and the, I'll call it the Ten Acre Team, are working together to align things to the extent they can, even though the Ten Acre is only in a conceptual development stage, whereas the high school is in a final site plan stage. We're also looking to get a final site plan that potentially wouldn't need to be amended. So, this site plan would carry them through the construction and opening of the high school with the contingent items identified as part of that site plan approval. So, for example, the parking would be guaranteed by off-site arrangements that may not be completely determined at, at the time of the site plan approval. completely determined at the time of the site plan approval, but would be a commitment that they would have to provide those in order to get COs and open and so forth. In terms of technical issues that staff identified, we did a review in January, gave them a letter at the end of January that indicated those technical comments and some of these procedural context phasing issues that I just discussed. And so those technical issues were pretty straightforward, other than we're, as part of the subdivision, we do need that, a hard property line between the 10-acre and the high school. And there's a meeting tonight between the school officials and the city in trying to finalize that. There's also a schedule in which the city will provide that subdivision. This applicant would not have to, but it would be part of the application that should be before you for final action, projected right now, either the end of April or the 6th of May. I guess in terms of getting that approval, the application, we expect to come in early next month, first week in March, and it would be able to catch up in terms of the development review process with the final site plan consideration for you on May 6. In the staff report, we talk about both the zoning, which is B2, the comprehensive plan designation, these having been designated by the City Council with your recommendations the last six months, and this project conforms to both zoning and comp plan. In terms of timing, on the last page, there's, the site plan schedule highlighted is your work session tonight, and as I indicated, there's an April 29th special meeting if needed, but more likely a May 6 final public hearing to be advertised for approval of this site plan. And then it could be a work session again in the middle of May if needed. That's tentative. And with the school targeting to have permits by June and construction to start once school ends on June 17th, that's their target. Also, if you look at the West Falls Church Economic Development Project under the SAE process, this approval is needed prior to their final action on the SAE the 28th of May. So the schedule's outlined, and then also the area planning, which would start up in the summer, is also indicated on here as, in the context of this site plan, how it ties into the other. So at this point, that's the staff report and the key issues. I guess lastly, in terms of sort of the technical nature, there's potential for a couple of landscape waivers that require planning commission action. There are no variances, as we've seen, and then we didn't want to understand the circulation plan, both interim during the construction as well as post-opening of the high school, and then during the interim construction of the 10-acre site. So I think, you know, those are a couple of components that we're looking to get more information on with the resubmission. So the applicant's aware of these, and they're prepared to do a brief presentation tonight, give you some additional background on how they've touched on some of these issues. And then we expect them to resubmit within the week for the second submission, and then the staff will review and prepare comments for them next month. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we've got tight timelines, it sounds like. So let's hear what you guys have to say about where we're at.
Great, thanks, Gary. Good evening, everybody, members of the Commission and Mr. Chair. I'm joined here by Bob Sherrill, architect, Tim Bragan from Lab Landscape Architect, Ken Ellis, our civil engineer, and Daisy Bragman, who is representing the owner this evening. So we do have a brief 10, maybe 15-minute at the most presentation to get you up to speed of what we've been doing and the coordination that's been happening the last few weeks and months with the economic development team. So without further ado, let's get going. So this is what we're going to talk about. We'll keep going. So in a nutshell, summary of implements, this is the last time we met, exactly three months ago today. Coordination, obviously, with the economic development team. We've also further developed the site and further developed the building, which we'll talk about in the next few slides, next. As Gary talked about, so we submitted for what we're calling Phase One, which is what you see in red. And that's what we need to meet the target, our schedule. And Phase Two is what we're calling the trapezoid. So that is, at the time, a big question mark and an unknown. But subsequently, of course, we're meeting with the city and the economic development team to really understand what that is. So, next slide. As Gary mentioned, the, as talks progress between all the parties, I think we do anticipate the fact that we don't need to come back for an amendment, and we will further define where that, exactly where the line is. Next. So Bob's going to talk about the developments with the elevations in the next three slides.
Thank you. Since we last presented the project, the building design has developed a bit, but has not changed substantially. Massing, the footprint of the building, has not really been altered. Subtle changes have been made to some of the fenestration, but materiality, the way it relates to the school that we're in here, Mary Ellen Henderson, is the same. Chief material is a blended red brick that will play well with the adjacent building, a base of charcoal gray masonry. And the stair towers, as you can see from the front elevation, which is the top view, is a cream-colored or tan-colored masonry. So three different types of masonry. All the metal that you see on the project, whether it be trims or spandrel panels around the windows, the windows themselves, the curtain wall, any metal will be a medium gray or a gray tone. The view below, the rear elevation from the back, Mary Ellen Henderson, school is on the right. Next slide, please. And stadium view, stadium view from the, at the top, with the curtain wall glazing looking out towards the stadium. Again, nothing much has changed. We've integrated mechanical louvers and things like that that we needed to do. Otherwise, the design is pretty much what you saw last time. Next. And a few additional elevations, one from basically cutting next to Mary Ellen Henderson, looking at what faces it, and then what we call interior, almost courtyard views between the two bars themselves. So just the other miscellaneous elevations that show the look and flavor of the building.
Thank you, Bob. So we transitioned to talk about the, kind of the close relationship that we've been developing with the economic development team and the city. So Tim's going to get us up to date on the interface between the, specifically where our main entrance is, as highlighted there, and the next one, please, as well as how, what they're calling School Road, sorry, Road B, and their bike path interfaces our site. Next.
Yeah, so I guess the main things to highlight here, really, as Jack said, have to do with things we've learned about the economic development site and how these, the entrance in these surfaces will align with those. So going from the top, we now have geometry relating to the width of the road there and the bike path. So we've got a, two bike lanes, and then a striped area separating those from traffic that are going to terminate into a curb ramp up onto the sidewalk at the top. We've adjusted some of the bio-retention planters there to provide a little more space for pedestrian circulation along that edge there at the top. And then looked more carefully at the tabled drop-off area and how it interfaces with the hotel on the right side. There's a breezeway that, there's a walk you can see there at the, sort of bottom southern edge of the, of the tan drop-off tabled area that aligns with that. We've massaged the grove a little bit to respond to that geometry, thinking about putting the donor bricks there in the, in the kind of center zone. And then at the, at the southern edge, this new drop-off area, we've had to adjust the geometry a bit to accommodate that and leave some space for that to work properly. I think that's about where we are. Yeah.
Thank you, Tim. Next. So we'll talk a little bit more about the drop-off area, the circul, when we get to the circulation slides. So here, we're going to talk about parking. Gary mentioned this a little bit. So we have nine-by-18 spaces. The ADA, the handicap spaces are currently eight-by-18, as specified by ADA, and that's as a result of the space plus the marking. So we're looking for some guidance from you guys and staff on that, whether we need to adjust that to nine-by-18. We do save a good number of space. So, yeah, so the size is, right, so ADA specifies eight-by-18, and so it's a foot smaller than a typical space. That's because there's the, there's the zone next to each parking space that is, that is striped and marked for them. Exactly. We can make it nine-by-18, but it does eat up some space where we have the handicap spaces right now is near where the S is, where the 214 spaces are. So what that does is that it really, it kind of chokes down that area a little bit more. So for right now, we've kept it at eight-by-18 and looking for some guidance from you guys on that.
So for ADA access, they park over on the other side where the 214 is?
Exactly.
And then they have to come all the way through that greenway path to get to the school? Do they have to come around to the front of the school to go in the school?
So, so this is where, this is where the Phase One and then Phase Two start to interface. So this is just the 214 during the Phase One. So we've accommodated all the ADA needed, all the ADA parking for that area, and we've put it near the, where the 214 spaces are. There's also existing spaces in front of the middle school, as you see here.
Right.
And then the remaining ADA spaces will actually be done by the developer in the garage.
And the trapezoid.
In the trapezoid, exactly.
Yeah, it's just, all of those spots are just so long. That's a big distance.
How close is the entrance?
Well, the purpose of those spaces is actually to facilitate entry into the fields for whatever purposes, whether it's rec on the weekends or evenings or school-related functions. The trapezoid, what we call the trapezoid, those spaces, including the ADA, are meant for the main visitors to the school that would use the main entrance. So again, I think a lot of it is deceiving, because when everything is fully built, I think that the distance is actually not quite as long.
We're going to have to have quite a bit of signage, because I think people coming into the school system towards where the only entrance really is, I mean, it's going to, they're going to have to have signage to tell them where to park, because I don't know if they'll naturally go to the trapezoid. It's just, it is kind of odd. This would be like one of, I mean, most schools have parking closer to the entrance, so it's much more easy to figure it out.
Yeah, and it would be if we controlled the trapezoid, there would have been, there would have been sufficient amount of.
Well, I'm into high school more. More people go to the high school.
No, it's not going to be there.
It's just very, I don't know. It's not going to be intuitive for people at all. So I think signage is going to be very, very important.
Sure.
And as far as the handicap goes, those spaces there going all the way over to the fields, that's a pretty far route.
Oh, yeah.
The entrance to the field is actually right next, so we've actually placed it right next to the gate to the field. So it actually is, is the most convenient area.
I think we need to the football field. People don't, are more likely to go to the football field than to the other field. And that's what we're saying. It is a long trek.
Stadium.
So I assume it's that grade the entire way?
It is that grade, exactly. Yeah, a lot of these questions are related to the fact that we're doing this phase development with the economic development team. So our intent, the school's intent, was always to provide the necessary parking in the trapezoid, but now it's just, it's going to be in a parking garage instead.
Well, I understand that. So I understand the 214 spaces. I don't know, do they go away once the trapezoid comes along?
No, they don't.
Okay, so they're, they're going to be, they're supposed to be used. It is a long distance. Is there a hardscape all the way there? Because in all the drawings I've seen, it's been just kind of green.
No, it, it, there's a, there's a pathway that's hardscape.
Because you get the fire trucks.
Exactly.
It's fire access, too.
It is fire access, right. So we make up the required fire access with this graphic page thing. Yep, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
But it has this, like, turn, though?
The path, the path actually goes straight.
Oh, okay.
It's a little washed out here because of the projector.
Probably look at the middle.
What jogs is the fire access width.
So that, that would be for any ambulance?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Maintenance vehicles, fire trucks, there's actually, the fire trucks can turn at the top near the, near the existing concessions building. So it's important to note that, that if you, if you break this up into two different areas, so the 214 spaces, which will be done in Phase One, and then the park, the remaining 187, which is going to be done in coordination with the city and the economic development team, they will each have ADA parking. So one serves the field, technically, right? It's really the school, and all of it is the school's. And then the parking garage serves the main entrance. But all of it is the school's parking.
Right, but it could serve the fields up.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I think at one time I asked if that was going to be a straight through to the, to the ticket, to the, well, we got the location of the ticket up a little bit. The ticket, the kiosk is way over there.
It's, yeah, it's in that top right corner there. No, no, go to the right.
No, it's way to the right, yeah.
More, yeah, right there.
Yeah, it's right there. And so I think I asked if that would go straight on through, and one time I thought you said it wasn't going to.
Straight on through to...
To the, to the stadium field.
Right, so we have a grading issue. It's actually very similar to what is there right now. See, it kind of dips down. So what we're doing is right now is we're gently sloping down to meet a level that's below the main entrance, which is where the gym level is. And then, so that's what we're calling the promenade. So that takes, that takes everybody out to kind of the central area near the concessions, and then you can go down to the field from there. And there's many other ways to get to the, to the football field. The vomitoriums are another way to get down from the, from the building for the, for the building inhabitants. Okay, so as Gary talked about, we are sitting at 400 spaces required. And it's split between, actually, currently provided is actually 401, so I apologize for that. So we're sitting at 214, and then the 187 that is anticipated with, from the economic development team. The two areas that Gary talked about in terms of variance, which has to do with the perimeter lot landscaping and the interior lot landscaping, quite frankly, this is really just pressure from having to get as many parking spaces as we can. And you can see the site, it is, it is fully utilized. So there is not one ounce that is not being used. So, and that's the reason for, for that. If we were to provide for all of these...
So code would require more parking lot islands?
Exactly, and that just takes away from space. Exactly, yep. Next.
And were you going to talk about the drop-off area?
Yeah, well, we'll talk about that, exactly. So, so this, this slide is, really talks about the coordination that we've been having with the economic development team. The slides are small for a reason, because we're not here to talk about the, the design of the parking garage. But, but what this shows is, and I think staff has seen this, is what the developers have planned for us, for the school, the 187, which is utilizing the lower couple of floors for the 187, of their parking structure. And in addition to that, the surge parking anticipated for, say, you know, football nights or other community events that will happen. And it just turns out that it works very well in terms of how the scheduling occurs for the, for the businesses and for the retail and things like that. So, so that's where we are.
We had one of those last weekend.
Yes.
Huge.
Huge.
Oh, my God.
Next. So the next few slides talk about the current plan for parking during construction. I'm going to put on my Gil Bane hat for a second here. So as, as you flip through these slides, I think there's three or four of them, the idea behind is that all of the current spaces, the approximately 450 spaces that the school currently has, will be available until the high school is being demolished. Okay? So that's very important. And so these slides have been passed around with staff recently. We'll need to massage a little bit, just based on development of, of design. But that is... But that is, that is the whole point there. As Gary talked about, you know, during the demolition of the high school and the construction of the garage, you know, there are, there are ways that there are, there are ways we're looking to provide temporary parking. I know we've reached out to the UVA VT site, and I know that, we haven't heard anything, but I know the city is helping us with that. So, that's certainly a possibility. We do anticipate working with the economic development team in terms of using their phase-two portion of their site for temporary parking. So, that discussions, those discussions are ongoing. All right, go ahead. Keep going. So, well, the next few slides, we'll quickly talk about the circulation, but this time overlaid with the economic development plan to the right. So, very similar to what we presented before, we have their main through access, which is along what we're calling School Road there that bisects the site. It goes out to Hancock and into Route Seven. We have Fire Department access that we talked about previously up Mustang Way. And then we have, of course, the new service drive that's behind the middle school that we sit right now. Next.
Oh, wait a minute, real quick. So, you can come from Hancock, obviously, and drive through to Seven. But of course, you can't, there's certain, like, you can't turn left on the Seven. So, are you able to turn around and go back out on Hancock easily?
You can circulate through the parking lot to go back out to Hancock. There is, like Gary talked about.
So, you would just, like, go to the MEH parking lot and drive around? The parking lot come out? Is that what you're suggesting?
That is one option. And what Gary had alluded to is the NVTA grant, which the city is looking at. So, that involves the possibility of looking at what happens at the intersection of Route Seven.
Yeah, because the majority of people who come here, almost all of them, well, all of them live to the left, don't go to the left. I mean, go to the left, they live to the left. No one wants to go right. And there's no way to U-turn on Seven unless you go all the way past 66. So, no one wants to go there.
Understood. Currently, I think the school uses police officers to stop traffic so that the buses can make that left turn. We recognize that is not the perfect thing. So, I think that with further coordination with the city, with the NVTA grant, hopefully, there's a solution there that involves with the streetscaping along Route Seven as well. Exactly. So, in addition to that, what you don't see there is the developers' plan to have a decel lane that accesses their garage. And one of the things that we're talking about, again, this is just, this is talking through our meetings, coordination is extending that decel lane to incorporate our entrance as well. One thing is that the top right, the bike access, obviously, has changed. So, we're coordinating with the economic development team to have bike access along their proposed bike path from Hancock. Next. So, we're going to talk about the arrival in the Smithville a little bit. So, bus queuing will be right in front of the middle school and the high school. We'll have a blow-up of that in just a second. The middle school drop-off is anticipated to be roughly the same as what it is right now. Next. So, as we zoom into this area that Tim talked about a little bit more, so the buses will be arriving or temporarily parking in front of the school. If they park at an angle here, which happens a lot, we can fit all of the anticipated parking, anticipated buses, which, by the way, only happens during the pickup in the afternoon because in the morning, the drop-off is the drop-off, the keep-going, drop-off, keep-going. So, it's never anticipated to really have a density.
Why do the buses turn around? Are they going to turn around at MEH?
The buses are anticipated to come out, either make their right or hopefully make that left with coordination with NVTA or the police. Exactly. Basically, that area doesn't change.
Because right now, they come in and they do a loop and they go immediately back to Hancock. Yeah, because they drop off in the loop behind the high school.
Yes.
And so, they immediately come around, they're out to Hancock, so.
There's a heck of a lot more buses than the six.
Oh, we're not showing the bottom portion of it. Yeah, we're just zooming in. The purpose of it is to say that with coordination with the economic development team, we have a new high school drop-off, which was originally in the trapezoid in the parking lot area, very similar to what Mary Ellen Henderson does today. But we have a new area there that you see in the orange line. So, the parents or whoever will actually arrive from the development area. And we think that this is really great because it really alleviates traffic along our school road and it completely separates the vehicular versus the bus traffic. So, this is a really big benefit to what's going on with the negotiations.
So, Gary, when they do look at the transportation, the grant area for the, is there a possibility of having a light for the school system?
I mean, in terms of the scope, I know they're looking at writing things, but I couldn't say.
I mean, that should really be considered if there was a light on the Route Seven side. If people could come out, it would be, it would cause less stacking at Hancock and Seven where people are trying to cross over to Shreve because you'd get people out of that. They wouldn't be part of that group trying to cross to Shreve. So, people are, like, coming from Fairfax County going through to 29.
And isn't there going to be a new island there, too?
I can communicate those to those, you know, working on that.
And when they're looking at various ways to design that, I think there could be some advantages. I mean, usually, it's not an advantage to have another light to slow down people. But in this case, it would separate out the people who are just trying to go down Seven into the city from the people who are trying to cross straight over, which is now a horrible merge that doesn't work well.
I agree. So, this cool thing doesn't work during the construction of the.
Right, so we will be finished when the economic development team comes in and builds the garage and that drop-off. So, temporary measures have to happen.
So, that's an eighteen-month timeframe? I'm saying, we opened the new school. Old school still is there, has to get torn down, build parking deck. That's like an eighteen-month thing before this parent drop-off.
Before this condition.
The parent drop-off, because he can't get there. Be nice when it's done.
We'll just stop them on Hancock.
Patience, yes. Next. Okay, so, but that's circulation, very similar to what we've shown before. There's a little bit more, but these are the major circulations. We're providing access to the football field in various different points. Obviously, Mustang Trail, Mustang Way, Hennepin Trail are major points behind for the field. And what Tim talked about in terms of that breezeway, you see that line on the very right side that bisects that building. So, again, we're working with the economic development team to make sure that it is fully integrated into how we design our site. Next. So, the last topic is bicycle parking and storage. This was an issue last time we came to you guys, three months ago. So, with negotiations with the economic development team, we're obviously using the bike path that they're going to create for Road B. We are providing the necessary bike racks within a hundred feet of the main entrance for Lead. And we are also providing, we're happy to say, we're providing for the full 150, for the full 1,500 build out of the school bikes. So, if you go to the next slide, so we're looking at different areas. Obviously, there's going to be a density of bikes at the main entrance to satisfy Lead, but we're also spreading the bikes out. Obviously, there's going to be some in front of Mary Ellen, and then there's going to be some bike racks behind in the fields. One thing that we talked about with staff recently is our preferred choice for the bike racks. So, we were told to look at Arlington standards, and they have the inverted U. So, we looked at that and we looked at this product, which is modified U, it's kind of a V. And we'd like to use this as opposed to some of the other things that we've seen. It goes more in line with, I think, the aesthetics of the building. It's nice and clean. We're going to have, don't forget, we're going to have a lot of these things. So, we really want it to kind of go away. And so, we're looking for some guidance on whether we can do this or not.
Are you mostly referring to our cool-looking but not super practical bicycle-shaped bikes?
That is, that is one of them. So, we're looking at, we're looking at high density because we need to get a bike.
Check out one of those, just, you know, just one of the great bikes.
We could look at that for sure.
Yeah, there are a lot of places that have other bikes that are more.
It would have to be red, though, right?
We'd just like to put one here and there.
Only if it's by the high school.
It's like the bull, right?
Yeah, just a little flush. It just means you're in the city.
By the middle school has to be green.
I think we'd do that.
I haven't seen these before, but it looks practical to me.
Exactly. It's very clean. It kind of goes away, you know. I mean, we're going to have, Tim, how many, how many bike racks in front of that building?
Gosh, it's got to be forty, I mean, I forgot.
Forty, fifty?
Forty-three, I think, right in front of the main entrance.
I think this is one instance where, where built it and they will come. Hopefully, we'll apply.
We build it, yeah, exactly. But, you know, it's a nice facade. We really don't want it to plow that plaza up with a lot of bike racks. But at the same time, we're very, you know, we're very cognizant of Lead. We're going for Lead build, obviously, at a minimum, so.
Have you done a survey on how many of the bike racks are used now? And projected?
Yeah, but they're not good racks. They're terrible.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're the, what do you call the?
Old-fashioned ones.
And I think that's it. Next, I think next is just, thank you. So, we can go back and just use the site plan as a background for Q and A.
So, Gary, I assume that AAB hasn't seen any of the architecture at this point. That would be when we get closer to our formal site plan process?
Yeah, well, they will get the staff comments to date. And they're scheduled for the first week in March. We had tried to schedule it in February, but we weren't, it didn't work out. So, at this point, they'll be seeing it for the first time. Of course, they, you know, saw it in the joint session. They haven't seen the detailed filing yet, so.
Yeah, we are, we are planning a more robust, design-oriented site design and building for the AAB on the sixth.
Right.
And I've got a big question. Has anybody seen any of the materials you're talking about? We're always used to saying.
Well, that's why, when we get to the more formal, I mean, we're like, we're a little ahead of the formal, formal. We'd like to actually see some physical representation of them. I guess what I was trying to figure out on these drawings, what is this blue stuff? The blue that, there's like blue, blue, blue. Is this just representation of the glass in some sort of way? Or is this actually the color blue?
Yeah, I think in the print, it shows up a little bit, blue. Let's go look at that.
Is that what it is? I just wanted to make sure.
The glazing just is reflecting the sky in the rendering.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure because we didn't ask that question at TJ. We ended up with some weird yellow thing that doesn't actually, is not actually orange.
Is he going to say Volvo?
I would just say, like, just from these sketches to other sketches, I'm not really wild about his design. It just seems to be a bunch of geometric shapes just shoved together in certain ways. I'd like to see what the AAB feels about it. It's also really hard to visualize from this flat thing. It just, I don't know, I was at George Marshall recently, and they, you know, did a renovation. And they just, it, their renovation just seemed more attractive to the sketch.
I think the materials that we bring them in, the perspectives, too, will help explain it better, I think.
Yeah, but it's just like the, like, the side facing the field, that kind of looks like a prison to me. But maybe it's more attractive if I could actually see it. I don't know.
So, what you're asking for is some renderings?
Well, I think we're going to, and when we get to the, really get to it, I think we need better renderings in this so that we can really get a better feel for where it's going to look like. And we definitely need to see a sample of as many materials as possible.
And paving for that special section.
And, of course, you always like to see a, well, we provide a material board.
Right, that's what we're saying.
Any other questions? Yeah?
In the staff report, Gary, on like line 121, the second modification is for parking. Right, it's hard to understand. It says temporary only with ten, do you know what, what is this referring to?
Well, in terms of, this is basically the, the site plan will reflect providing the full requirements. But on interim, we may have to have some approval with contingent on off-site parking being provided. This was meant to be a very general statement, whereas later on in our staff comments, we define this a little further in terms of modification of parking. So, the modification would be you'd be granting off-site agreements that are pending at the time of your approval. So, that modification would be in place contingent on them providing that. So, obviously, they would have to, anyway, we just wouldn't have the details of those at the time. So, the modification is one of your authorities, and the other is to waive the landscaping. So, that's why those two are listed. And they indicated a variance, so that would actually be the third item on this list. And that's for an existing condition where they've got a, you know, they're leaving the existing parking and redeveloping the rest of the site. And so, when you look at the property lines, that is an existing need for a variance. And so, it looks like they may proceed with that application with the BZA, or they may find a way to provide those spaces elsewhere and avoid a two-month process with the BZA and legislative action. And that would be a recommendation from you at the time. While it sounds very benign and straightforward, you know, it is a technicality in terms of, it is a variance requirement when you're redeveloping, you know, a majority of the site to, you know, provide things that meet the code requirements, even though this is existing conditions for me.
You know, Gary, about parking, you know, UVA is using our lower parking lot all the time rather than parking on their own site for night classes.
Is that a formal arrangement or is that informal?
I have no idea. I think they're using that because it's free or something other like that. But I think that's got to be worked out somewhere because that takes away from our parking even capability for all the multiprograms that we might put on. Because that, like, Tuesday, today is Tuesday, but coming in, that was pretty full.
Well, I could ask the president in Newton about it because I noticed more and more people doing it, parking there and walking. So, grad center, I didn't used to see that many, but it's gotten a higher number. And he said that it was part of some agreement that they had made with the grad center, like, they were allowed, supposed to allow us to have the ability to test in some of their rooms. And one of the things we said is they could use some of our parking in the front. So, I don't understand why we would make that agreement when they have a much, a very large parking lot that's not full. But that's supposedly, according to the superintendent, that is an agreement.
That is totally full, uh, was totally full tonight with what I assumed because all the basketball games were down this way tonight.
Yeah, as Appken mentioned, they are in negotiations with them as well for this interim parking that they'll be required to meet the 400 once they open in 2021 in January. So, yeah, I guess that would be a consideration of both ways.
My narrow way of looking at things, they better be paying rent for those markets, considering everything else that they cut out of that agreement over the years.
Any other questions or comments?
Any particular challenges that are uppermost in your minds right now? You should proceed.
Certainly, there's, you know, further development in the design. You know, we're always looking to add more parking as much as possible. You know, our team and Tim is working hard and trying to get the details down in terms of the actual site design in preparation for the AAB. You know, these are nice general overviews, but as we zoom in, we, you know, we're going to see some really nice, cool things happening, some nice materials, paving patterns, things like that. So, we're excited to come back to you guys and to AAB on the sixth to show those things.
Do we have one, a couple more Sunday meetings?
Yeah, there's one, one per month.
But I meant particularly on the school.
Yeah, well, they share both of them.
Yeah.
Well, anything else?
Just a quick question. Is a TDM plan required? I know that it was staff noted.
We had suggested it. It's not required because they're meeting the parking requirements. But we thought there would be some benefits to having some of those elements on a voluntary basis.
I agree.
Is there any interest in reducing that 187 to 150?
Oh, in terms of, from a TDM perspective, or...
Well, the EYA team is adjusting their payment to the city, based on that number, as I understand it. And the cost of going from 150 to 187 is over a million dollars to the city in terms of the payment that they're making.
I guess that would be a question to the applicant, as, you know, as well as a consideration of the city.
I, I think that is above our pay grade here. That, that, that has a lot to do with the politics and the pressures that the schools are under to, to provide parking. So, yeah. Well, we'll have to defer to Dr. Noonan, yeah.
And then Gary, who's going to be designing the security and building security addition to this school?
I, I would ask the, the team if that's a consideration.
The design team is, is integrating security measures.
Okay, and do you have that planned somewhere on, online or anything?
Uh, no, not, not specifically. I know that members of our team were at the school board tonight, actually, and that was one of the main agenda items, is, is going through the different myriad of security measures.
Yeah, because I'd be very, very interested in seeing that. I'm very familiar with the school, helped get it built and taught it, subbed, but never totally, yes, I have.
We may not want to show everything to the public, huh? It's secure.
No, but, but I am very concerned about that, because it was, it's not secure, yeah.
All right. You know, my brief, really brief comments are, I'm okay with waiving landscaping, a lot of green space on this site. So I personally have no issue with that and open to that for sure. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion about the trapezoid and the parking garage. I really want to see that happen, both from the economic development perspective. I think it has a huge impact on that side of it. And also, I think it's a really nice, elegant solution for the schools to make that work. So, you know, whether it's 150 or 187, you know, that's, as you said, a, a different conversation. But I'm really hopeful that all the various elements can be moved in place, because there's some legal issues and things like that, that both sides continue to work on that part of the proposal to make that work. And in terms of, like, the visual part, when we look at the, the plan view of the entrance, I think it looks very attractive. But when I see the elevation here, that the, the entrance looks like it has, you know, two sets of doors, four doors, it's a lot of glass. The entrance does not make a statement to me the way that I would have liked to see it. But again, archi, landscaping-wise, I think that's really quite nice. But this, this is, and I don't, I mean, it just seems like a bottleneck in terms of reduction in doors. There's even more doors to get into this middle school than there are to get in the high school. I, I was, I don't have a major opinion about all the other stuff, but the entrance did not impress me. That was my, that was my comment about that. I'll have a suggestion, per se, but did not, this, this, this particular element, as you're entering this, you know, new, new building. I actually like the entrance towards the field side, big home of the Mustangs, but I think this is the main entrance that we're looking at here. So, I, I, underwhelmed by that part of the design. So, I don't have a suggestion. Maybe the AAB, maybe the AAB can give you some suggestions or continue to work on that. Otherwise, we're going to see you back here really shortly. And I guess we'll think about questions at, at that time and have a little more clarity on a few of these items. But otherwise, you know, thank you for your time and appreciate the presentation. That's good to be brought up to speed on what's going on. Anybody have any more comments before we complete this?
When will the interior materials be chosen?
Uh, they're being currently worked on right now. So we're at the design development phase. We have a bit more to go. So that's currently, currently being worked on.
I'm extremely interested, having survived four renovations in the school system. And, you know, just, I just value engineering. I hate it. Hate it worse.
Us, too, yeah.
Hate it. This is what we're looking at right here, among other things.
Okay. All right, with that, appreciate it. I think we're, I think we're done.
Yay.
All right, we're adjourned.
We're done. All right.